All right, we're on. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two Nottingham Planning Board to order. Before we get started, I'll go around the room and have everybody introduce ourselves, starting with Ms. Jones.
David Jones, alternate.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Gary Anderson.
John Warren.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Charlene Anderson.
Larry Haiti, SRPC.
And I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Alana Kenny, our new Land use clerk, and thank her for jumping into that position for us. It looks like Sandra was seated last time, so Mr. Davies will be seated in voting tonight for Ms. Sandler. Ms. Jones will be participating but will not be voting. So we'll go ahead and take everything in order to the agenda. The first item is a continued case, number twenty-two dash zero-one-one dash S U B, an application from Jones and Beach Engineering on behalf of Jim Rossborough requesting an eleven lot subdivision, property located on Moore's Road in Nottingham, identified as tax map seventy-two, lot thirteen dash one, and applicant has filed conditional use permits.
Mr. Chairman, recuse from this case, so.
Mr. McKinnon has recused, so we missed. Ms. Jones will be seated and voting for Mr. McKinnon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and rest of the board. Thank you very much for having me. Again, my name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. This project is for a eleven lot open space subdivision. Just to remind you, since the last meeting, we have been able to attend the Raymond Planning Board and obtain their approval. The only input they had was that the board wanting wanted Nottingham to be aware that on new projects, Raymond requires a turnaround at the town line. And I think that was part of their notice of decision. I don't know if the town has received it yet, but or Nottinghamers, but I know they were sending it. In addition, we have provided the board with the N H B report. The only hit was for the Blandings Turtle, which anywhere in the area, you get at least the Blandings Turtle and more typically more turtles as well. We provided the wetland report, the Vernal Pool Report, as well as a response to the Lamprey River Advisory Committee. We have provided updated documents forming the HOA with the added protections as requested and as we discussed previously. We also provided the board with an alternative yield plan depicting eleven lot standard subdivision. That's this plan we had labeled Y two. I still believe that the original yield plan is valid. The wetland impact required is, I think, reasonable. It's about, we do have, we are requesting three conditional use permits. We kind of discussed this in the past, but the first is allow the elimination of the hundred-foot landscape buffer associated with the open space subdivisions. The second is for a wetland impact associated with the culvert replacement, and the wetland impacts eighty-three square feet. And the third is to allow lot sizes greater than forty-five thousand square feet. This one, we discussed quite a bit last time in conjunction with the lot location alternatives, and it appeared to me that the board was in agreement that they preferred the original concept. So with that, discuss or take any questions the board has. If there are any questions left regarding the yield plan, my suggestion to the board would be to vote on the yield plan, and that will allow the applicant to determine how he was going to proceed.
Do we, Ms. Kenny or Blair, either of you, did we receive anything in writing from Raymond regarding, so Raymond, their purview of this was because the sole access is from, from their road, from Raymond's side? So that's, so their purview under the RSA is to be able to speak towards, towards that, if I'm summarizing that correctly? So does anybody else?
Yeah, so as Barry explained, it requires a turnaround with school buses to snow piles at each town line crossing.
Yep.
And that was the exception of what they had added in there, notice the decision beyond standard or standard conditions, you know, taking local state, local state and federal permits. And that, and then getting approval here.
So basically, they're, they're asking for, so basically, if I'm understanding correctly, all they're asking for is that there be a turnaround at the town lines?
Well, it was, it was debated, and they also sent in the email, I thought the town got it, but if they haven't, I'll forward it to the, the minutes from the meeting. But there was some of the members that were, were asking for a turnaround. Some of them were not interested in the turnaround. They wanted to inform the town of Nottingham that if this was a new project on a road, that they would require a turnaround. And it was, you know, I informed them that typically on existing roads, you don't provide a turnaround at a, just because it's a, a project at the town line.
Since they don't maintain the road, we plow it. We plow all mountain road, we plow that whole section of road. We take care of all that for the town of Raymond.
Yeah, I didn't want to get into any of that, honestly, so.
Isn't mountain road a state, a state road?
State does Nottingham to plow it. So it's, yeah, it's still a state road, but we are still in for, in charge of taking care of it. You know, we don't have to pave it or paint it, you know, but we have to plow it, sand it. That's all done by us.
Do we not have a turnaround at this point? Or are school buses, are there school buses? Do we not have one?
Is there not a turnaround?
At the junction?
Well, our school buses go all the way down and do the whole loop.
What about the Raymond ones? You don't know, you don't care.
So, yeah, that's what I'm wondering is, did they describe what their turnaround looked like?
No.
I mentioned at the sidewalk that the current, they use like, that's somebody in the barn area, like that lot.
So that was what I was informed that the, if they plow it, and I don't, they indicated that no buses go down the road. I think they turn around at the, the top of mountain road. That if they plow it, that they turn around in the applicant's driveway where the barn is.
That's probably there.
And it's private property, you know, so my, my recommendation was if they needed to turn around, we are providing a, a larger area at the cistern so that the fire trucks can pull off, that they could do a three-point turn in that location. Or they could go all the way to the end of the, of Moore's Road and do a three-point turnaround there.
And, and so, so you have a cistern location already?
Yeah.
And that when utilizing that spot, is the, does it need a turnaround that wouldn't compromise cistern or put that?
Correct. Yeah, it's a widened area for the fire truck to pull off, you know, to, in utilizing the cistern, so they could also use it as a three-point turnaround. I mean, in all reality, I'm sure they'll go to the end of the road and do the three-point turnaround there, if necessary.
Is, am I, is what I'm seeing, that small area, like right in the center? Okay, that is it, that's a cistern.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah, you have the dark kind of rectangle is the cistern, and then there's a twelve-foot by.
Thank you.
Is the cistern big enough for a bus to turn around?
Well, my information was that the bus doesn't use, the Raymond bus doesn't come down and turn around on Moore's Road. That they either pick up at the top of Moore's Road, because there's only a few houses on Moore's Road that are in Raymond.
Well, it seems odd that they would require that if their buses don't need it, doesn't it?
That was probably part of the discussion, you said, where half the board was saying, why do they want it?
Yeah.
They, it wasn't, they weren't making a requirement. They wanted to advise Nottingham.
I see. Thank you.
We're so advised.
We are.
And did they have any comment about the other side of Jumpsa?
No. I mean, I believe if you read their, the minutes, originally, they were asking that we connect the roads, Jumpsa and Moore's Road.
Somewhere like further down the?
Right.
Property? Somewhere in down and not?
That was just, yeah, can you connect it, and we're not proposing that.
Yeah, there's nowhere, it's under the control of the applicant. That looks like it would be a feasible connection. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, yes. Yeah, that was, that was my answer to them, too.
And we did, so we've received a new updated yield plan. So we had sent out a question to council about how to interpret yield plans. We did get a review just yesterday or today. I think the new yield plan kind of makes that a little bit moot at this point, but if the board would like to discuss it, we can go into non-public and remove ourselves for a moment to have a conversation on that. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to even read it or review it, because again, it just came out literally yesterday, so. So that's up, I'll let you all think about that for a moment, or let you read it. It's flagged, it's probably flagged in your folder with a pink sticky.
Mm-hmm.
So do I take a moment to read that? What is it? It's only a couple hundred feet between, from where the proposed cistern is to South Road, through the, off the South Road. I imagine that could potentially be utilized as an alternative turnaround.
Correct.
For our apparatus in.
Well, I'm assuming that our apparatus will go all the way to the end of Moore's Road and then turn around on, probably on South Road as well, to the loop.
Mr. Chairman, when everybody's ready, I think it's best that we go into non-public to just discuss it.
I agree.
Something, do I like to make a motion?
I move that we move into a non-public session.
Per RSA.
Per RSA, I don't have it in front of me. Sorry.
Ninety-one A, but I don't know which letter it is. John, do you know off the top of your head, or actually, isn't there a cheat sheet underneath your laptop there? The RSA.
No. I got it. RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three.
Yeah, and then there's a letter after that that references legal.
Yeah, D? I think you say ninety-one A three.
I was thinking it was E, but maybe.
Yeah, it is E.
E?
E, okay.
Oh, no, no, consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel. That is on K, H I J K L.
L.
So, let's do this again. I move that we move into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A, colons three, section L.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mooney.
Roll call.
A second by Ms. Anderson. We'll do a roll call. Ms. Jones?
Upstairs.
Mr. Davies?
I missed the question.
All right, we're just doing a roll call on the motion to move it into non-public.
Non-public.
Approved.
It's in Robert Davies.
Robert Davies.
Thank you.
Hi, Gary Anderson.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Sue Mooney.
Hi, Charlene Anderson.
Hi, Edward Veal. So the motion carries six zero one. So we'll, to make it easier, we'll step out to Land use office and, and leave there. That way, all the people in the room don't have to get up and, get up and leave.
Sit tight, everybody. Back in five minutes.
Almost over eighteen thousand linear feet. It's three and a half miles. So very close. I was gonna do this because it looks like a kid do this a dead hour.
Who was doing it?
Derek.
Oh, yeah, and they're like just find the derrick tree. Matt did like his best job, like some finding tree lines.
Snake in. Just. Put me down on curve. Like that's a, so. Radius from a.
I was pro for sixty-twos, for sixty-fives.
Fifty-two. There would be the encroachment.
Who's saying that?
We're, we're.
Why do we?
We're actually. With a sharp curve, think about that trailing trailer. So we're possible, we're. No, so it comes, my, my hotel driver. It looks like they're gonna pass at least one or more tour. Building property, hotel. Why? Give me thirty seconds, like approval for else hotels, hotels, special building to a, square feet, it's loseable. There seem too much. Hotel, hotel, not enough.
You live in a colony.
Based on tourism. So I guess they completely do, they just have to ask for it to be extended every year of about up to five years.
I thought you had mentioned that was three.
I know they have. Here we have the.
Here's me.
Well, that's what the site, that's what they worked for. Twenty-five percent. The traffic got to you, you'll count. Traffic around. That's a, they're like.
Space.
Roll like a landscape. Land, they have landscape, landscape, treats it as like. So you're basically just trying to force laws, leaving these big chunks of land.
This is just.
So it's gonna kill them, it's gonna kill, I, I, our clients. Basically told them, there's a potential to be, clear to this point, like, I don't know how it's gonna get into this. They vote on our January twenty-fourth meeting to send that to public hearing, or to vote. That gets published, and all these are published, right?
All published.
The town's not gonna accept any of an application until they know.
Oh, we can't get, like, go forward.
It's gonna go to the park and be like, hey, if this gets approved in April, so they don't shoot, I mean, if they don't prove it, they submit. They approve it. Only family, they're all three, five-year wait on this. They want, they want four houses in four hours. If, if they're in.
That's what they did.
So what about the other comments? That's the one where you really, multiple comments about.
She sixty-two.
That's what's coming down. Please, like, for my general roadway, like, basically. And I was like, we're all talking through it, and I go down to like the intersection over through the signal light, and we're gonna turn on to the road. And what can I say, well, approach here, I can't get W B sixty-two in from one of the directions. So I said, in theory, existing roadway can accommodate, because you can't be like, oh, internally, you guys have to have no encroachment. Well, we can encroach on there on the road to, again, it's, it's gonna be fair. As, of course, I'm like, like, and then Sean Burdrum, they're wants to, you guys should just meet and talk through it. And Wayne and I agree, you know, get those guys to like, just agree to stuff, it's a person a lot easier than like virtual. Have the wrong people on the call, people like, put their foot down. But if you, if Wayne and I.
Yeah, if you could like, get them to understand what you.
Yeah, so, you know, like, hey, we, just like, meet with you guys and kind of talk through it, it's the last of it, and so we gotta figure out, just, you know, like, oh, yeah, we both have COVID, we'll get back to you next week. It's like, okay, so we'll see you in the new year, but this.
What was I gonna say? I can't remember. Yeah, it's, it's pretty hard to get a big truck.
The first thing we're thinking, why are we the correct design of a W B sixty-two? Yet we would not be, we're not designing our site to receive W B sixty-two. So if you're, why would you, high school doesn't need that. So you're basically forcing a roadway or something to receive.
I drove by the, on the way home last night.
Is this, where are you talking about?
That's where the, yeah, the fire system.
What about Starbucks there now? They, they were having a truck there unloading. I was like, how do they do that?
Like, are they on the little main street, like main street, or not?
No, they, yeah, they come down main street, drive in and they like, pull straight into that other parking, or shop, or something.
Off hour?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Some of those other businesses are probably still open.
I don't think you know that's.
I'm just like, when you do that, Wayne's so proud of that. Because he did that, shoehorning that Starbucks. I think it's one of the highest-possessing Starbucks in the state. There was like, I didn't chase a lot and just make it look bad. It looks like you just turn us up five pounds.
There's lots. I got looking at it. But what is it doing?
It may still be some. Yeah. They're not a water, 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 not the one over on the line, are they still like restricted?
Sure.
That's what I'm, you, okay. Well, they were restricting.
Well, they were restricting.
Which is weird, right? Because you're not getting, you're not getting inflow, that's just like the uses are produced. Because you're not gonna get your inflow. So we have a lot of sewer, that, that lot has a lot of sewers, like industrial, you're never gonna hit it, but.
Oh, no.
People are having questionable calculations, because they're also effing, I think, it's getting hit. They just have. We're gonna have hundreds of years of Chris, he just have like.
Air raiding when you're in there. Well, same thing that.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to tire those, they, they're still.
I haven't heard any.
It could not be. I would assume so, right? They're not gonna like.
Why?
Yeah, I was like, are this fixed enough? But I'm curious, are they still used as like storage, and then they treat?
They're treating.
I don't know, that's the true.
They're getting.
If there's a forty-nine million dollar. You ever notice all that new building away from that hallway? Further away.
Forty-nine million.
Like, they did a whole retreat. They took out one of the.
Well, maybe.
They basically did their treatment on the smaller footprint.
But I think their issue is, is that, please, we're all disturbed.
But I think you were talking about extra guys, extras still can't get their things for. All of them can write it, it's, it's like, they're gonna go on private property.
That's why they're.
Sorry.
Sorry.
All brackets.
Looks a lot around this. They were gonna, they started to scope this, and the guy was like, I'm not scoping, this is like the biggest, bigger definition.
Oh, well, I guess, yeah, I think there is.
Yeah, that is.
Well, at least a big, often a big two-slip line, we don't.
Sold that.
They had to do, we had to do that for all the sewer lines.
Like, two years ago, I was talking to him, and he's like, I gotta go to the town and ask for an extra thousand, hundreds of thousands.
Is it up already?
Because we were talking about updating the hospital, and the, the home station hospital goes out. And so we're, you know, like, well, we're eventually gonna talk about it, because the hospital's, eventually gonna have all of them.
Probably largest single producer.
They're gonna go to the home station, and the home station on the other side, so we gotta, we gotta remember that we all agree is their portion of local, your own population. He's like, I got bigger problems.
Yeah, that's a tricky one, too, because the profit is not profitable, hospital probably. You always, I guess, you guys, they always look at, you look at, pay your taxes, yeah, but they think about the earnings that work there, that do within the town, that's what you get, that's true.
I know.
But that's for Durham. Well, that's because Durham, Durham had the issue, they basically have to redeem the money, but it's an infrastructure project that can be deemed like the public, so basically a lot of roads, like unless, I think unless it's like there's some material roads that you want, but like the primary one that cuts over from the width, start like over behind the college road, that one, but they basically have a fifty-fifty side, that if it's around the university, but it's.
They said totally. There's a potential to be. Here's to this point, like, I don't know how it's gonna get anything. They vote on our January twenty last meeting to send that to public hearing or to vote. That gets published and all these are published, right?
It's published.
The town's not gonna accept any of the applications until they know.
Oh, we can't get like go forward.
He's gonna go to the park and be like, hey, if this gets approved in April. So they don't shoot them in, if they don't prove it, they submit. You approve it. The whole family there, all three of them. Five year wait on this. They want, they want four houses and four cars. If, if they're in.
That's what they did. So, uh, what about the other comments?
That's the one where you really. Multiple comments about.
She sixty-two.
That's what's coming down. Please, like, your partner, my channel, Broadway. Like, basically. And I was like, we're all talking through it, and I go down to like the intersection over to the signal light. We're gonna turn on to the program. And what can I say? Encroach our approach here. I can't get WB sixty-two in from one of the directions. So I said, in theory, existing roadway can accommodate. Because you can't be like, oh, internally, you guys have to come no encroach. Well, we can encroach up there on the road to, again, it's, it's gonna be fair. As a, of course, I'm like. Like, and then Sean Bergeron, they're wants to. Guys should just meet and talk through it. And Wayne and I agree, you know, help those guys to, like, just agree to stuff. It's pretty personal, a lot easier than, like, virtual. Have the wrong people on the call, people will, like, put their foot down. But if you, if Wayne and I.
Yeah, if you could, like, get them to understand what you.
Yeah, so, you know, like, hey, we just, like, meet with you guys and kind of talk through it. It's the last bit, and so we gotta figure out. You know, like, oh, yeah, we both have COVID, we'll get back to you next week. It's like, okay, so we'll see you in the new year. At this.
Oh, what was I gonna say? I can't remember. Yeah, it's, it's pretty hard to get a big truck.
The first thing we're thinking, why are we prepared to design the WB sixty-two? Yet we would not be anticipating, we're not designing our site to receive WB sixty-two. So if you're, why would you? High school doesn't either. So you're basically forcing a roadway or something to receive.
I drove by the, uh, on the way home last night.
Is this, where are you talking about?
That's where the, yeah, the fire system.
What about this? Starbucks there now. They had, they were having a truck there unloading. I was like, how do they do that?
Like, are they on the little main street, prime main street, or not?
No, they, yeah, they come down the main street. Drive in and they like pull straight into that other parking. Shop.
Off hour?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Some of those other businesses probably still.
I don't think you know that's. I'm just like, when you do that.
Wayne's so proud of that shoehorning that, because he did that shoehorning that Starbucks. I think it's one of the highest producing Starbucks in the state. There was like. Why didn't Jason lock and just make it look like, it looks like you just. Turn us up five pounds.
There's lots. I got looking at it. But what is it doing? He may still be some.
Does that thing, they're not a water, water parks, are they? Not the one over on the line, are they still, like, restricted? Sure, that's what I mean.
Well, they were just, they issued a vote at one point. But I'm already saying right now, the issue of the, because I remember reaching out to this about the. They were deep that door. Too many permits, projects that are openly there, they like. He was like, I don't see that.
One of them is, they did the sewer extension.
Right, because like, all the new.
Which is weird, right? Because you're not getting, you're not getting inflow, that's just like the uses are produced. Because you're not gonna get your inflow. So we have a lot of sewer, that, that lot has a lot of sewers, like, industrial, you're never gonna hit it. But. All of them, maybe, get into new sewer. People are having. Questioning calculations, because they're also effing, I think, it's getting hit. They set. We're gonna have hundreds of years of Chris. It just sounds like.
They're raiding what you're doing. Well, same thing that.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to tire those things, they're still. It could not be. I would assume so, right? They're not gonna, like, keep.
Why? That's our, yeah.
And this fix it up, uh, but I'm curious, are they still used as, like, storage? And then they treat it?
I don't know, that's the true. If there's a forty-nine million dollar.
You remember, that's what, you remember all that new building, um, away from that hallway? Further away. Like, they did a whole retreat.
Yeah, a whole show?
They took out one of the. They basically did their treatment in a smaller footprint.
But I think their issue is.
But I think you were talking about extra guys, extras still can't get their things. All of them can write it. It's. That was, like, they're gonna go on private property, so. That's why they're.
Looks a lot around this. They were gonna. Started the scope, basically, and the guy was like, I'm not scoping. It's like the biggest definition. Rod it out?
Oh, well, I guess, yeah, I think there is product.
Yeah, that is.
Well, at least a big, often a big two-slip line, we don't. They had to do, we had to do that for all the sewer lines.
Like, two years ago, I was talking to him, and he's like, I gotta go to the town and ask for an extra thousand, hundreds of thousands. Because we were talking about updating. The hospital, and the, uh, somebody's. A pump station hospital goes out. And. So we're, you know, like. Eventually, we'll talk about it, because the hospital. Eventually, I have all.
Probably the largest single producer.
They're gonna go to the pump station, and the pump station on the other side. That we all agree is their portion of what they're on the pump station. He's like, I got bigger problems.
Yeah, that's a tricky one, too, because the profit is, not profit, possible profit. You always try to, yeah. Those towns are always, like, I guess, you guys, they always look at, you look out, pay their taxes. Yeah, but they think about the earnings that work there, that do within the town, that's what you get, that's true. But that's for Durham, well, that's because Durham, Durham had the issue, they basically have to redo. If it's an infrastructure project that can be deemed like. The public, so basically, a lot of roads, like, unless, I think unless it's like, there's some material roads that you want, but like, the primary one that cuts over from the width, start, like, over behind the college road. That one, but they basically have a fifty-fifty. That if it's around the university, but it's a couple of roads. Probably helps because, like you said, like, they could just, the university. That adds up, uh, pretty quick if you're not paying fair share.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, Mr. Henderson, let me just, but we can, um. Uh, so procedurally, the, the next thing would be roll call to, um, close the public hearing. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Um, I move that we close the minutes and decisions of this non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral three.
Motion by Ms. Mooney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson, um, so that's to seal the minutes and close the non-public meeting, if I understood it correctly. Uh, we'll do again a roll call, um.
Hi.
Oh, say, say your name, please.
Sandra Jones, yes.
Hi, Robbie Davis.
Hi, Gary Anderson.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Edward Veal.
Yes, Susan Mooney.
Hi, Sha- uh, Shaleen Anderson.
So that motion carries seven zero to, uh, close the non-public and seal the minutes. All right, thank you, everybody, um, we get back to business. So where, I think where we're at now is, we've got Matt Raymond, uh, you did a pretty concise, um, overview. Provide us with a new yield plan, which eliminated the question on that, shows that you still could have eleven buildable lots. So if there's any further discussion on the yield plan by the board, uh, I don't think we have to make a motion to accept the yield, um, or anything like that. It would just be what we utilize for the, uh, open space. We had fire department review, which I believe applicant, and their response was to add sprinkler systems to the two on Jamsa and.
Did he say that on the recent one?
With the fire chief?
Yes. For the fact that there being two lots there and not putting a cistern over there?
Uh, the fire chief is requesting. The last letter I had.
Which is dated.
October twelfth.
You might want to get that revisited.
Was requesting cisterns on both Moores and Jamsa.
Being, because there's two lots on Jamsa now, you might require cisterns on both.
That's what he's, that was what he was saying on.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Since it includes multiple lots with multiple units on Jamsa.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure it's same.
This is reliable, more than Jamsa. The applicant was proposing a cistern on Moores and then, uh, sprinkle the two on, on Jamsa. I'm not certain, uh. If the NFRD letters to us are advisory, uh, and we have the authority to, to do anything different or approve differently. I believe we do, in most cases. And then there's probably some extreme examples where, uh, you know, the, like, the fire chief can. Safety can, uh, get involved with, with building permits, but I think that gets beyond our purview.
Isn't a sprinkler system considered a higher level of fire protection than a cistern?
Couldn't tell you. I, I, I understand probably the thought on that is that one is immediate potential protection for the, the house, um.
Well, he, when, in the past, the fire chief has always recommended the sprinkler system for us, but accepted the cistern as a backup.
So I believe we can take this, you know, under consideration and, um. But, you know, make, make whatever decision the board, the board so chooses. What they get, you know, with.
I personally would like to see the sprinkler system over the cistern. Once the cistern's put in, it becomes town property, and then we have another cistern we have to maintain and take care of down the road.
And there's no other.
And there's really no other building that's gonna be available in that area, supposedly, you know, it's gonna be, especially if you put it on that road. Even if they develop Saxis Road, you still won't be able to get at it unless you climb through the woods and over to go over and get it. So it really might not be accessible, except for those two. So why put an expensive apparatus like a cistern in, which could fail in the next ten years, and then we're stuck redoing it?
Mr. Guy.
Cost of the town money.
Do you know where the nearest house is to this, on Jamsa Trail?
I apologize, I don't. It looks.
It looks like the, if you look on, on the Raymond side, but on the, um. If you, as you go down Jamsa. So there is one right there, that's.
So I would still want to see clarification from the fire chief as to if he's actually requiring. If he's actually substituting one for the other, or his actual recommendations.
Our preference is, we understand, um, the need for the fire suppression. We provided a cistern, thirty thousand gallon cistern on Moores Road, and we're requiring the two lots on Jamsa to have sprinklers. I know this board just approved an eight lot subdivision, that was a road front subdivision without a cistern, with sprinklers. So, um, the, I know the applicant would be very upset if he is not allowed the same as any other project that's approved.
And all, all I'm saying is, I'd like to hear the fire chief's, you know.
Yep.
Take on that.
It's not apples to apples, I know that, I know which one you're speaking of, but that was a through road, um, you know, this, these are dead end roads, and so they're, they're not the same. But I, I understand the, uh, I understand the argument there, just the, you know, number of units and, and the cost required and everything. So we can always, uh, have you had any input from the fire chief regarding the specific cistern that's proposed on Moores Road? Just like the size and capacity and design?
He requested the thirty thousand gallon, and he, I believe he was provided with the plans, um, and I, that was the only comments that we had. I'm not stating that he didn't have, he doesn't have additional comments, but those are the ones that we received.
Sure, all right, thank you. I did not get any further response from Lamprey River Advisory Committee. I sent them, uh, when Mr. Guy provided the link to the town with the wetlands, the rental pool, and the New Hampshire, uh, Natural Heritage Bureau reports. I forwarded that on to, uh, Lamprey River Advisory Committee, because it was part of their, their original response, was asking for that information. I have not heard anything further. Mr. Guy, have you received any direct communication? No.
We have not.
We do have the HOA docs, is there anything additional proposed, like deed language or anything else? Because what'll happen, what'll have to happen is that will have to get submitted to our town council for review and comment.
Nope, this is the declaration.
That was.
Declaration covenants, and that covers everything.
So I will, um, get that submitted to council for review. So I think at this point, we're probab-, we've not acted yet on the conditional use permits. I believe there was a response from the building inspector, co enforcement about the, uh, question about intermittent or first order stream. And it really was determined that it's kind of not impactful either way in this.
Correct.
In this case, so.
Due to the fact that the, the stream is in the, basically in the center of the wetland.
Yeah. So the only thing I would ask, can you remember if there was any notes that reference it is, is, um, different than what the town shows? But if it's, if it's not impactful, if there's any reference to, like, you know, to intermittent or seasonal.
I believe, I don't believe that's in the plans, I believe that's only in the, uh, wetland report.
Okay, so, that's fine. I was gonna request that that be changed to match what the town has. So I believe we have the three conditional use permits to, um, to act on. Are all three of those still valid? I know there was discussion about changing the lot sizes on the open space to eliminate one of those.
Correct, that was, we had a, a healthy discussion last time regarding the, um, the size of the lots being, some of the lots are greater than forty-five thousand square feet. Um, I showed you some alternatives where we could make all the lots meet the requirement of being under forty-five thousand feet, forty-five thousand square feet. My recollection is that the board preferred the option that we, um, the original option, which is C two shown there.
May I interrupt? Does that mean that the lots are not going to be less than two acres now? I thought that you had shrunk them those up, because that's contrary to what the open space.
The lot, so the lots are, um, it's not two acres, it's, the, the maximum is forty-five thousand square feet.
Forty-five thousand, correct, right.
Um, there are lots four through nine that we still show as being greater than forty-five thousand square feet, and we're asking for a conditional use permit for those.
I see.
I guess I remembered it differently, um. Yes, I remember that, I, I remember that differently, I didn't remember the, the board indicating that they were preferring the, uh, the large lots. I think it was indicated that, uh, if they could be made conforming, that they should be made conforming. Then kind of, we have the minutes, the draft minutes here, but, but regardless, I mean, we can have that discussion now, um, so. So let's take them in, in order, uh.
So the first one that we would requesting is a conditional use to article, Roman numeral four, um, section S point eight, point G. Which is, um, of the zoning ordinance to allow the elimination of the hundred-foot landscape buffer. And, um, I think we, I know we went over this before, but because this is an open space subdivision proposed, typically, you're creating new roads. And the requirement for the hundred scape land, or hundred-foot landscape buffer is to push the lots off the existing road into the, um, interior of the project, if you would. Because we're not creating any new roads, and all of our lots are frontage lots, we're asking for, um, a removal, elimination of that hundred-foot landscape buffer. Which will make the lots. Keep us out, uh, or further from the wetland and allow, um, construction closer to the road, and it's more similar to the existing lots in the area. Um, we can go through the criteria, but you have the criteria in the letter that I provided for that. Or we can go through each one.
Yep, so I think we should take these in, in order, take them individually, uh, makes the most sense, enact on them individually, um. So we have a conditional use permit requested for elimination of the one hundred-foot, uh, landscape buffer. Is there any questions on what that means or why, what that was besides, beyond what the applicant has, uh, summarized for us? So if not, we have, I think they, like they said, they, they went through kind of the points, but the objectives of the open space, um. Subdivision. Implement municipalities master plan, maintain rural characters through preservation of farmland, forest, rural viewsapes, encouraging residential development that is cited in harmony with environment, promote sense of neighborhood. Preserve those areas of the site that have high environmental or ecological value. There's more to that number. Provide for alternative housing opportunities, including workforce housing, reduce impact of development sprawl by decreasing potential for consecutive lot development, major roadways. Look at buildings and structures on those portions of the site that are most appropriate for development and avoiding development. In areas not suitable for development, such as hydroxyl conditions, flood paint, flooding, steep slopes, preserve historic archaeological cultural features. Create a permanently protected contiguous network of open spaces or greenways by linking the common open space with open space subdivision to an open space or joining lands whenever possible. Uh, reduce the amount of roads, sidewalks, stormwater management structures that must be built and maintained, provide undeveloped frontage where appropriate, long while corridors, existing roads, protecting transportation corridors and, uh, from encroaching structures. Unlike some of our conditional use permit areas that spell out, uh, a lot of other criteria for granting of a conditional use permit, it's pretty vague in the open space. It mentions kind of that we can waive or, not waive isn't the right word. A lot of the criteria set, set therein. Is my reading of it. Is there any discussion on this specific application? Anyone? I think in this case, it makes sense, there's no new roadway being proposed, and that the proposed lots are, uh, in alignment with kind of the, the rest of that neighborhood. Or the, a lot of the, a lot of the housing currently on, um, on Moores. So, would anybody like to make a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion that we accept the conditional use, uh, permit that's requested per article, uh, five, section. S eight G of the zoning ordinance.
One second.
That's a motion by Ms. Anderson, and second by Ms. Mooney, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Was it, point of, was it five or four? I have it written down as four.
Did I not say four? Did I say five?
Say five, yeah.
Oh, I meant four.
Let the record show that, um, Ms. Anderson corrected motion for the right, the correct, uh, number of the zoning ordinance. All right.
So the second, oh, you guys.
Please go ahead.
The second conditional use permit was to, uh, article, Roman numeral three, section B point six of the zoning ordinance to allow, uh, wetland impact of eighty-three square feet for culvert replacement under Moores Road. So we discussed this before, the existing culvert under Moores Road, um, for the stream is currently undersized and will continue to be undersized unless we replace it. So we are proposing to, um, replace that existing culvert under Moores Road, which requires a, um, wetland impact of eighty-three square feet.
All right, and this is a different article, this is the Wetland Overlay District, uh, in which we do specify specifically, uh, the conditional use permit, um, criteria. Can read those off to you once I get down to it. Uh, it's three B wetland conservation areas, correct?
Correct.
So, um, the conditional use permit will only be granted provided that no alternative route, which does not cross a wetland or has less detrimental impact on the wetland, is feasible, and all the following conditions are found to exist. A, the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of land not within a wetland conservation area. And the upland area considered for development is not smaller in acreage than the wetland area, acreage being considered. B, designs, construction and maintenance methods will be such as to minimize detrimental impact upon the wetlands, and will include restoration of the site as nearly as possible to its original grading conditions. C, the non-impound conservation commissions provided comments relative to the value of the wetland under construction and design of the proposed project as it relates to the wetland. D, economic advantage alone is not a reason for the proposed construction. E, prior to the granting of the conditional use permit under this section, the applicant shall agree to submit performance security to ensure all constructions carried out in accordance with an approved design. There's more to the security part, which would be, if approved, would be a condition. The planning board may require the applicant to submit an environmental impact assessment when necessary to evaluate an application made under this section. to evaluate an application made under this section. So that's, those are the A through F, the criteria for considering a conditional use permit under the wetland conservation area.
Can you give me the, was that Article three?
Article three B is in boy, Wetland Conservation Areas.
Section three.
Yeah, Article three B.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to, to accept the conditional use permit for case number twenty-two dash zero zero one one dash S U B. Article S, Article three B is described.
I second that.
So, a motion by Mr. Anderson, a motion by Ms. Jones. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. So, for this one, I kind of see this as two different things. So, there's, there's the, for the construction of the shared driveway, and then there's for the culvert replacement. And I think those should be broken out into two separate motions, because I think that if you look at the criteria, I think the criteria would weigh differently for the shared driveway versus the culvert replacement.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The town of Nottingham doesn't have a wetland buffer, per se. It's a wetland setback for buildings and such. I inadvertently indicated that we needed the wetland, or the CUP for the wetland buffer impact, but that is not the case. It's only for wetland impacts.
That's, that's correct. Yeah, so we do not, so our CUP is specifically for direct impacts to wetlands, not, not to...
Wetland buffer.
I apologize for the confusion there.
So then this one should be, you should pull this one back then? You're not asking for that?
No, we are asking for the CUP for the eighty-three square foot wetland, direct wetland impact associated with the replacement of the culvert under Moore's Road.
Which I, if I recall, that was suggested by our road agent, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm sure, yep. So it sounds like this, this culvert is something that needed to be addressed, kind of regardless of this particular subdivision and, but, you know, the subdivision itself precipitates the...
So, so then should the motion be clarified to what this, what the motion is accepting? As a way that this is presented and written?
We can, we can do it that way. If, if, either, so we either have the motion amended, we can vote on the current motion. We can do that, either way. So, what, Ms. Anderson, I believe what you're proposing is that if an amendment to the motion was made, it would be to say, to remove that section, that piece of it, which is non, actually not applicable to the CUP.
So, I'll amend that to, to say that the, the impact is not applicable to wetlands, buffer, or driveway. I think I got that right.
Does that need a second?
So, Mr. Anderson amended the amendment to his original motion.
I can second it again.
Ms. Jones, you second amendment?
Okay.
So, we have an amended motion by Mr. Anderson and Ms. Jones regarding the CUP for the, the wetlands impact. Now amended to specifically just address the culvert, the actual wetland impact, not the buffer. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries seven zero. All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, did we vote on to eliminate the hundred-foot landscape buffer?
We did.
It was moved and seconded.
Yeah, we voted on it.
We voted, okay, you must have had a mental vacation, sorry.
You were getting ready for the next one.
All right. The third, the third request, Mr. Guyer?
So, the third CUP requested is for Section Roman numeral four again, Section S. point eight point A, and that's to allow open space lots greater than forty-five thousand square feet. This is for lots four through nine. And the intent of that is, if you can, if I can stand here, a couple of these lots, like lots seven and eight and nine in particular, the wetlands are along the road. So, in order to get to the buildable area, we need to extend them a little bit. And really, that's the requirement for it. We can make it work under, by having the lots under forty-five thousand square feet. I think they're more reasonable at the sizes that we're requesting.
So, if we're comparing, just to make sure I'm understanding, the date of the plan for C2 that you're referencing is...
Should be ten nineteen, and the, and the...
Ten nineteen, number three revision date, yep, got it. And then, A, sheet drawing A was the alternate to that? Is that correct? Where they called, they were shown to be all less than forty-five thousand square feet? Doesn't have revision dates, it was new.
Oh, yes, I believe that's, and I apologize, I forgot to put that on the board. But yeah, we, last time we provided three alternatives, and I thought we had determined that...
Yeah, A, A and B. So, C2, which is the current, with some lots being larger than forty-five thousand square feet, A, where they were all under, and then proposed lots eight and nine were together, not merged, but...
Correct.
Next to each other. And then B, which I believe was, nobody was in favor of...
Yeah, push, that push lot nine further to the, to the north.
Beyond South Road. And then into that steep slopes area, so. So, we kind of read through it again. You know, I'd like to hear the board's input before I, you know, say anything from my side of it. See, no input. I'm generally in favor of, if it can meet the zoning, it's not causing reduction in yield or anything like that. If it can meet the zoning, then in general, it should, unless some really good reason is shown for it not to be. When I look at the alternative A, it looks like it actually kind of moves some of the lots, like Lot eight, a little bit further away from the wetland area. It kind of eliminates the potential second buildable area. And again, it just makes it conforming within our open space, which would mean that you're gonna have, you know, more open space area.
I prefer to see the lots bigger.
I'm sorry, what?
I prefer to see the lots bigger than the way they are.
Yet I recall that we wanted to go with the larger lots. I have the minutes of November ninth in front of me, when Mr. Guy was going through these options. Option A depicting slight modifications to lots four through nine, which are the lots on C2 and greater than forty-five thousand. But the revision makes them less than forty-five thousand, which then would not require a conditional use permit, and be more in the spirit of an open face subdivision rather than a hybrid of a conventional and open space. That's my take.
I, I understand your point. I would disagree, because we are providing greater than the required amount of open space by quite a bit. Twenty-seven point four three acres are required. We're proposing thirty-four point nine. Of buildable, where we were required to have thirteen point seven one of buildable open space, we're providing twenty point two nine. So, you're getting sixty-three point seven percent of the property in open space, which is quite a bit. And in my opinion, that these lots that we're proposing on C2 are more, they provide for better buildable areas, as well as they simplify the lot, which makes it easier to police in the future. Your lot goes from point A to point B to point C, you know. Try to eliminate as many as you can of the points in the lot, and I think this does a better job of it. We did show that we can make it work with option A, but I think it's better to go with something like C2. And I think your open space regulations really are advanced, where they actually allow you to do that fairly easily. All it is is a conditional use permit, and there's not really specific criteria, because you guys have already foresawed these issues. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'm just, I'm just kind of stuck on, I understand that, you know, line of thought or argument. Again, if we can make it conform to our conditional use, our open space plan, I guess, I'm not seeing a lot of the extra benefit, besides, you know, a few straighter lot lines. You know, especially where there is so much well in, in this, involved in this application. But that's my thought. So, is there any further discussion on the conditional use permit application number three? If not, I can hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we do not accept the conditional use permit per requested per Article four, Section S. eight A.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Ms. Mooney. I'd say, since we're, if you're making a motion towards denial or non-acceptance, that criteria or reasons be listed.
As we've stated, this is, to fit more for, as our open space subdivision requires for, or requests for lot size.
There's a motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Ms. Mooney. Is there any further discussion on, on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, which would be to not accept it, please say aye.
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 Are you, an aye, or do you say no?
I'm a no.
We haven't voted that part yet. One second.
So, are you voting with the motion to not accept it, or are you voting against the motion?
I vote against the motion.
So, you gotta score with the regular flag.
All right, thank you. All those opposed to the motion?
I'm opposed to it.
Ms. Jones, you're...
I'm opposed to it.
Opposed to the motion, okay. So, motion carries five two zero. The conditional use permit for lot sizing is not approved. We had two alternatives, A and B. I think we resoundly kind of said no to B, so we're at this point looking at A.
So, Mr. Chairman, that being the case, we need to go back to the drawing board to basically provide you a formal option A.
Okay. It looks like you have your test bits, I noticed on the C2 that was on this one, the test bits were dropped off, but I know you had them on another one. But you have the test bits on A showing, you know, two test bits in the 4K areas, it looks like, and most of them at least. Some of them got covered over, which I know you'll, you'll fix.
Right.
And then, I think the rain garden areas, you know, would be lost on that one. Is there any further discussion at this point? I mean, we, we still, this is a continued public hearing, so I can reopen the public hearing to allow additional comment from the public. But before I do so, is there any additional comment yet on the board? We'll bring, bring Mr. Guyer back up, of course, after as well.
I would just like to thank Mr. Guyer for putting more teeth in the covenants for the open space, particularly with herbicide and pesticide restriction within fifty feet of wetlands, and no fertilizer other than lime or wood ash.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think the other things that we talked about too tonight is, one, we should get the Raymond minutes and...
Yeah.
And then, is there still an open issue on the fire on Jamso, right?
We can, we can reach out to the fire chief to let them know the proposed, the proposal from the applicant, which is to sprinkle the two houses on Jamso Trail, and just get their formal response to that, because I don't think we have a formal response to that proposal yet. We'll do that. Make sure we just re-review Raymond's information. I don't know if they pare down their minutes or not. I've looked at their minutes in the past, and it was...
I didn't read them.
Verbatim. They're like hundred, hundreds of pages long. So, I don't know if they...
I have them. I'll fire them to you as soon as I can get...
I didn't know if they ever draft those down. It seems like they have a recorder that does voice transcription, so they become very, very, very long. All right, and then, okay. So, I'll open the public hearing.
I have one other thing too.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Mr. Guyer, you had brought up that you were gonna get back to us on whether or not beach access was gonna be allowed. There was something in the deed, and a decision hadn't been made by the owner?
Yes, there is. I think the, the declarations do indicate that they will be allowed beach access.
Okay, I guess I didn't, did you see that? I didn't see that.
No, I didn't see that.
I will double-check it while we're in the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm not certain. I guess it would depend on where that is, and if that impacts our, our purview of this part of it, if there's additional impact kind of off-site potentially. I don't know if that's... I guess we'll see. We can get, wait for the town council's input on that piece, if that is proposed, as to where that is and what that entails. Yeah, so, all right. Public hearing, I'm gonna reopen it to the public. Anybody speaking for, please come up first. Against, or just general questions, if it's, we do ask that you keep the comments directed towards the board. Identify yourself, naming address, please, and, and again, just comments towards the board, please.
Hi, Diana P. thirty-four, Moore's. Okay, I just wanna get a couple of things straight. The Raymond bus does not come down Moore's Road. It stops at Mountain Road, but uses it as a turnaround at the top, okay? So, no buses ever come down Moore's Road. Most of us know that Champion plows Moore's Road. Plows a lot of roads, but Champion gets paid from the town of Raymond to plow their section of Moore's Road, and then gets paid by the town of Nottingham to do our section of Moore's Road and South Road. So, he's getting paid by two. I'm not quite understanding where this turnaround is, and how they're, so, the town of Nottingham, I mean Raymond, if they're plowing, they have to come all the way down Moore's Road to South Road? Is that how I'm seeing this? To turn around and go back up the road?
So, right, the current condition is, I believe, possibly, it seems like they use the driveway, which is where the barn where we met for the, the sidewalk was.
Correct.
Being proposed, I believe, if I'm understanding correctly... Being proposed, I believe, if I remember correctly, is that the road in the area of where the cistern will be installed would become an area that could potentially be used as a turnaround.
So they have to come down almost a half a mile to turn around and go back up?
Well, their other option is to back down that small section of Raymond and plow out to a mountain road.
Or the other option is that very first lot becomes, part of that lot becomes a turnaround in a new plan.
Because when I was at the Ray...
The lot, the very first lot.
Lot one, part of that becomes...
Smallest of all those lots, you're gonna take more land from it.
That's what I'm saying. You could take...
That's ridiculous.
Well, no, you could take any lot then. Take lot two, take lot...
When I went to the Raymond meeting, they said that it was a law on their books that if two towns meet on a, on the same road, that they have to have a turnaround to get back out. And I don't see them coming down almost a half a mile on Moores Road to turn around to go back out again.
Well, if you just go down to, God, what's the name of the first road?
South?
No, 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 not of Moores, you're coming down, when you come down Mountain Road, you have your first dirt road, all the mailboxes in the front right there.
Oh, Mendel.
Mendel. Where's the turnaround there?
I don't care about Mendel.
Well, I'm just saying, again, I don't think Raymond's, I don't think Raymond's very strict about their plans on...
But I'm just stating what was said at the meeting.
Right.
Okay, that's all I was stating. I just don't understand why they have to come down a half, almost a half a mile on Moores Road to turn around to go back out again.
The other option, again, you know, that section of Moores Road is pretty short, that's actually in the town of Raymond, and I believe there's some kind of driveway or something else that's right there that they potentially could utilize. So we're kind of trying to balance. So my guess is, there's a difference between when it's a brand-new road being put in and then there's, you know, best practices, which would be installing like a turnaround within, you know, at the town line. Where I think it probably gets a little bit sticky is, this is an existing, you know, road and so it's, and they're currently utilizing a turnaround that's, that's private property is my understanding of it. So it's, we're trying to find a way to potentially improve the current situation if the subdivision is to move forward and also, you know, try to meet whatever Raymond is setting for criteria. And it doesn't sound like they, doesn't sound like they made a hard and fast rule or request.
The other request they did put that night was that their section of Moores Road, there's gonna be, it's not a good road to begin with, but they feel that with all the heavy equipment coming in, it's gonna get damaged and that they put it to you guys to make sure the landowner or the builder fixes that section of Moores Road. That, and you should have gotten that by now.
Yeah, we should.
From them, but we all know how that works.
So that sounds like an off-site exaction.
Those were the only two things they put on there.
Which I believe we can require, even if it's outside our town. That'd be a new one for us, being that it's, you know, it's technically outside our town, but it's in relation to comment. So that is a possibility, if that's something that they stated and/or requested that we could consider, you know, based on the argument there.
So I do have one more. I'm stuck on this right now.
Yep.
So when they come down the road, do they have to turn around onto South Road, back into South Road and go back up again?
That's if Raymond even ever decides to plow the road.
But what if they, but if, I don't know what Raymond does at the top of the hill other than Champion, okay? I would think that if there's twelve feet of snow or a foot of snow on the ground, the big trucks are coming, not the little thing that Rob uses. But if they're fixing the road, how are they gonna come down? Their heavy equipment's gonna come down and damage our road, our part of the road? I'm not saying nothing about the fire trucks or the ambulances, because I know Raymond will help Nottingham, Nottingham helps Raymond. I'm not talking about fire trucks. I'm just talking about heavy equipment from the town of Raymond having to come all the way down Moores Road. Are they gonna have to turn back into South Road to turn around and go back out? Is that what you're proposing?
If they're bringing heavy equipment, we're bringing heavy equipment too.
I'm just asking, if Raymond has to turn around with heavy equipment, they have to come all the way down Moores Road? You don't know what the future's gonna bring with Raymond. Do they have to turn around on South Road? Impossible for them to turn around there. Impossible. You only have enough room for one vehicle on South Road, period.
That point, that, I don't, whatever.
Ms. Lepie, on the, on the plan there, where it's labeled Moores Road, still on the Raymond side, I don't know if this is a driveway. I can't, I'm not as familiar with that road. If you look up at the plan, right where, right where it says Moores Road on the Raymond side.
There's a house.
Is that?
There's a house across the street.
Is that a driveway?
Yes.
A private driveway? So, I mean, that's gonna be some back and forth with Raymond potentially, depending on what they are specifically requesting from us to consider and, you know, what we can, what we can do. So right now, right now it sounds like they're using a private driveway for a turnaround within the town of Nottingham. They potentially could do that within the town of Raymond, looking at the distance here in the plans. The applicant's proposing that there's gonna be a widened section where the cistern goes in that could potentially serve as a turnaround area for, for a plow. It wouldn't be able to make a direct turn, or that's where I do a multi-point turn would be one option.
Or just back up. That is the potential. We take our big, huge dump trucks and we back them down a lot of the dirt roads in order to sand.
Right.
Because we can't go the other way.
Yep.
It's very taxing on the driver to be able to do that, but it's, I mean, that's what they might have to. There's a million different situations on how they could take care of that. There's no answer tonight that we're gonna give that's gonna give the exact solution to this issue or this question.
So, yeah, I guess we'll be looking for the formal, formal recommendations from Raymond. We have their notice of decision, which mentions, we consider it. And that's about, that's about it, as far as I can...
Yeah, it wasn't a definitive statement. It was, it means like it was, consider Raymond's subdivision regulations, which requires turnaround for school buses, still plows it. So their subdivision regulations, theirs required, it just, and so the language was requests that you consider it. So it was nothing definitive. It's, it's, hey, redo this, maybe you should, and the minutes are eighty pages.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. All right, so we'll, we've got that to consider. So, and they didn't, in that notice of decision, they didn't mention anything about the condition of Moores Road and...
As I said, the other three are boilerplate, ones that we have that are similar.
Yep.
And they're applicable, but they're easily...
All right. Thank you.
I do have one more, but I need his answer first about beach rights.
We'll have to wait on that one. We'll have to, if you want to ask the question, and it'll either, you know...
Will it be put in the deeds that those property owners have beach rights to Patuckley Lake?
Can I answer once I get back up after the...
Yeah, please. Yep. Well, Ms. Lepie, we'll keep that as a question for the board, and when the applicant comes back up, we'll make sure that that was a point of clarification we had as well. So, okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for, against, or ask questions around this application? I'm gonna close the public hearing. It's eight twenty. Mr. Guyer, come on back up, please.
So to that point, to the beach right access, I did not find it in the covenants. I thought it was in there and I was incorrect. I do believe it is in his intent, the applicant's intent, unless he has changed his mind to provide, allow beach access. But I will clarify that, we still have to get the covenants to the town council for review. So before they do that, I want to make sure to clarify it, and if they're gonna put it in, to have it put in.
I can clarify too, that the beach access, where it's going to be, that's a very long road. It's most likely gonna be all the way at the end in the little cove and not towards the big public beach that's already granted people deed access from when that road was first constructed, because he has no rights to that area. So anybody living over there using that beach, these new houses will have no rights to that big sandy area. It'll only be to where the public launch is at the way far end of Moores Road. So if you're concerned with that, there's, he can't grant over there because it's not part of his, and it's a new subdivision.
So, Mr. Guyer, yeah, I guess obviously it's a point of...
So...
The point of contention for the people that live there have this beautiful beach out there, to be now public, eleven more houses going down there where it's already constricted as it is.
As Mr. Moore indicated, the beach access that we would, that we're discussing is at the end of Moores Road in the cove.
Correct.
So all the way through Moores Road towards where it says where Hanlon Hill Road is kind of labeled?
Basically at the end.
All right.
There's a public, there's a private, not public. There is a access for a launch for whoever has permission. I don't know who has, because I'm not, I haven't read it, but there's been always a access to put your boat in the water there for...
Is there parking down there?
No, there is not. So that's what you're gonna have a restriction is, just to let, you know, as we're talking about it, we'll throw it out there. People are not gonna be allowed to park on our town road, because that is now a town road. Any vehicle parked on the town road is subject to being towed by the town, because they're invading the emergency access of our ambulance, fire, police. So if people start parking down there in front of people's properties or in that road, they will be subject. So that might limit the amount of people that go down there and use it, because they can't park their car there, so they'll have to walk all the way down.
So...
So a little reassurance for people. But again, the future holds many things.
Let me understand this correctly. So if, it's good, I guess, get this all out tonight. So it's, where it's shown on the plan, that's basically, there is no, is there land owned by the applicant there?
He owns the road.
He owns the road.
He owns the access point to the water from there, because we don't actually own the access point. He owns the access point to the water, where the road takes a ninety-degree turn at that access.
Okay, so the town, so it's not a public, right now it's not a public boat launch?
No, it's not a public boat launch at all. It is a private.
It's a private boat launch controlled by the applicant.
Correct.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, because, yes, the private-public road thing, that makes it, you know, brings up as a question if the...
Well, it's not a private road there. It's a town road.
It's a town road.
That's why you can't park your car on the side of the road there, which you could inhibit the use of the ambulance getting down there. It is very narrow and that might become an issue. So I'm sure the homeowners in that area, if they start seeing people park their cars there, will be calling the town to, to hit, because it's happened on other roads around the lake in the past, because of people parking to access the road for ice fishing or whatever, and they're parking in the middle of the road, making it half the size that it is, which is enabling the fire, which they were all cited to remove their car or be effectively get towed.
Yeah, and if this subdivision plan was, you know, was going down further, you know, I'd be looking at some kind of better turnaround down, down at that end, but whereas it's limited to the front half and there's other areas. So I guess...
And I still need to clarify whether he is granting those rights or...
True, thank you.
Intending to, so...
Yeah, we'd obviously have to see that language pretty clear to make sure the council can review it and avoid those potential future...
Absolutely.
Areas of, of questions. Okay. So we've got some clarification that we're looking for, something specific from Raymond, whether about if they're requiring a turnaround, or it sounds like they're not, but they would like us to consider it, and if they're specifically requesting any kind of improvement of Moores Road up to the town line, which, because their section is paved. So hopefully we'll get that response. If we don't, we can reach out to the land use clerk to the planning board to request that they provide us this formal letter or something, so we can make sure that we address their, consider and/or address their concerns. That's all. Did I capture that correctly? All right. Is there any further discussion from the board tonight on this, on this plan?
I have one more thing.
Ms. Mooney.
Mr. Guyer, I'm looking at zoning ordinance, Article Four, Section S, that talks about the protection and management of open space. And Section D says the developer is responsible for the maintenance of the common area and other facilities until such time as the homeowners association is capable of assuming responsibility. So is Jones and Beach going to be monitoring the open space until there is an up and running homeowners association?
I'll have to look into that.
Okay.
The, just like in any HOA, the owner owns it until there's, half the lots are sold, basically, and the HOA is formed. So that's what that provision is. I would think it would be on the homeowner to maintain it, just like it says in the HOA documents. We, our intent is not to be monitoring the open space.
But there seems to be a gap between selling lots and having an up and running and capable HOA. So it would be good...
I guess we'll look into that and maybe provide or allow the ConCom the ability. Is that not a good, I mean, we're engineers, we're not environmental monitors.
But we are, are at this moment relinquishing our task of monitoring nineteen deed restricted properties up at Highlands, because we're getting old and weary and the pay's not very good. And the enforcement is marginal. So taking on another responsibility like this really should be jobbed out.
Yeah, I'll look into that. That's the first time I've ever had that request, so...
Thank you.
We're referencing G of the monitoring aspect. Ten, protection management of open space.
I, and also G, Mr. Guyer, yeah?
The G mentions prior in the town sufficient funds, is a one-time stewardship fee.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If the, for monitoring of the open space.
Is that still an article of, or for, I mean?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's the very end of that.
Four, S, and G.
Thank you.
And if you went to a land trust, they would ask for that.
So there's D.
Debt funding.
D mentions the HOA.
Yeah, it's not even, it's not even cheap giving away property anymore.
I don't know anybody doing that though, unless it's contaminated. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion from the board tonight? Just wanted to make sure we get clear as to where we're at and what may be needed to continue to move forward one way or the other. So, Mr. Guyer, if you can just confirm and send it to the, if you sent the land use clerk, you can CC me on it. If there's any additional verbiage being added, proposed before, and then, once I get that confirmation, I'll send off what we have to town council for review and comment of the covenants. Obviously, gotta make sure you have these items checked off on, to make sure we, we know how that's gonna be monitored. know how that's going to be monitored and such within those. And it may be, I didn't read through all of them, so. Revised Plan A, kind of just tidying it up a bit. And we will reach out to Raymond to request that they, that knows the decision is it. I mean, that's the legal, the legal side of it. If they were proposing sending us a letter, we haven't received one to my knowledge. So we, but we can reach out to them just to make sure that we tie up that loose end. Reach out to the fire chief to make sure they have a chance to review and place formal comment about the proposed sprinklers for the two lots on Jamsa versus Sistern. Is there anything else? Oh, Mr. Guyer, on the Natural Heritage Bureau report, there was, there's comment in there where if, like, if anything is identified that it has to go to New Hampshire fishing game. It wasn't clear. It mentions the RES one thousand, or REF one thousand section, or one thousand four, one thousand five.
That's, that's typically if you need alteration of terrain.
It wasn't clear. It just mentioned that.
Oh, that's the FIS thousand rules. I'll, I'll review that, but normally, yeah.
Thank you. Obviously, if there is comment that's needed, it would either be conditioned or ideally we get it ahead of time if it's one of those things that can be received ahead of time. All right. So is there any further discussion from board? Just because we need a cleaned up plan, take a continuance, another continuance is, is best. Mr. Guyer, what is your timeline like for that? It's on, to be able to get that to us. I think our first meeting is going to be January, our proposed meeting date is January eleventh with a deliverable date usually a week at a time, so January fourth.
So what's the second meeting?
The twenty-fifth.
Can we, because of the holidays, we prefer the twenty-fourth.
Yep, so January twenty-fifth.
Please.
Is there any other discussion from the board tonight? Okay, so, motion to continue to the twenty-fifth with the deliverables by the eighteenth would be in order.
This is chair, I, I moved we continue case number twenty-two dash zero one one dash SUB to be continued January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM.
Second. That's the motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? All is a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed.
Thank you all very much.
Very much.
Good night.
Just to remind it, so the deliverables one week at a time.
Red, Bill, I have to do this. Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and happy conference. Sandy, too. Thank you.
All right. Mr. McKinnon has rejoined his seat at the table, so Ms. Jones will, will return to participating alternate non-voting. We don't have another case on the agenda, but I know we have some individuals in the audience. Do we have?
Yeah.
Is he, are you here for a case or are you for?
We're here representing Shea Concrete.
Okay. Regarding conditions of approval or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Compliance update.
Okay. So I'll, I'll open that and then I'll, is it for Route Four, that part, Shea Concrete?
Yeah, you want the case.
Sorry, I'm trying to pull up the case number, so since we didn't have an agenda item.
That's not it.
And then I'll hand up the, well, regardless, what I'll do is I'll go ahead and recuse myself. I'll move the audience. Mr. McKinnon will be.
Blair, do you have that case number?
Taking over.
Email chain?
Taking over chair duties.
Stack of the June.
And I will be voting again, right?
If Mr. McKinnon so chooses.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Haney personally.
It says any voting to be done.
Yeah, because it wasn't noticed. Oh, I'll kind of go through it. Yeah, I don't have my stack of old.
I have the case number here, if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, that's helpful.
Twenty-two dash oh oh seven dash SIT.
All right, so just a little background, this, I don't, yeah, I was looking for the agenda, the approval date, it was this past fall. Yeah, if you guys want to come on, come on up. Yep. So this, this was a case that we approved previously this year and that number of conditions, state permits, DOT, AOT, really just state permits, general confirming if they need permits or not. And then there was, I know I saw some emails that, I think it was from the state, that it was determined that there is an AOT permit required. So it was more so, it kind of falls into our conditions of approval. We just say required state permits. So I guess at this point, I think you guys are kind of trying to go back and forth with DOT as well on your existing driveway too. So I think the goal here was, I know we can treat this as kind of just an update from you guys on where do you stand with conditions and we'll have to check if, although, we'll talk with Blair and make sure there's nothing that needs to be re-noticed to make sure we're in compliance, but.
Can I just say one thing? As we go forward with this here, referring to things as OAT, DOT, for the people listening, you should probably refer to it as Department of Transportation, whatever, because I don't know what DOA or whatever means.
Yeah, so there's, there's a number of, there's a number of state permits that are required to amend for a project. In this case, DOT or Department of Transportation driveway permit, they have an existing driveway, but when you change the use, you have to amend your permit. And then there's the NHDS, which is the National Environmental Services, alteration of terrain permit, which there's a threshold for what triggers an alteration on terrain permit, generally your larger developments with larger disturbance area. So that kind of falls into our standard conditions of state permits. You know, we kind of looked and I think it, I think initially back with the proceedings, it was, it's a large site, but that, you have to trigger, there's a timeframe for triggering that. And during that hearings, it didn't seem that we had hit that, but it sounds like the state looked into it. The NHDS AOT division looked into it and did determine that it met the threshold for disturbances, my understanding. So I guess I'll just look for an update and we'll just kind of work through next steps because it isn't a public hearing, we're not going to be voting on anything. We'll have to kind of just, it's more of a discussion, we'll figure out next steps, making sure we're noticing the case if we need to amend something in the future.
So we shouldn't discuss anything.
Yeah, so I want to limit our discussion. It's more so just an update from these, you guys have been working with the Department of Transportation and probably DES at this point as well. So I'll kind of turn over to you guys for a short update.
That's correct. For the record, my name is Taylor Doughty with BSC Group, representing Shea Concrete. We have George Showerman here, representing Shea Concrete as well. I am new to this project. I want to be completely forthcoming here. The previous engineer is no longer with BSC. So I took over the project. I explained to Blair, who I spoke with three, four weeks ago, I think. I am licensed in Massachusetts. I am not licensed in New Hampshire. I just want to be perfectly clear on that. I am a professional engineer in Massachusetts. We are currently in the process of, excuse, let me back up. Everything you said, Mr. McKinnon, was, was, was correct. We are, we have approached to New Hampshire DOT to get a driveway permit. We've approached New Hampshire DES to get the AOT permit. You're absolutely right. DOT folks flagged it as, as being, as requiring a, an AOT permit. So that's what we're going for now. We're imminently about to submit both of those, or finalize both those applications in the next week and get them submitted. So that's, that's the status update that I have.
So in, I guess, just as a general, from what the board here has seen, obviously there was, we've seen a site layout, we've approved a whole plan set, stormwater design. Has, has that lot, has any of that, is there substantial change to that? I'm just, we haven't, you guys are still working on that, but it's.
There's a couple of changes that DOT wanted. One was the sign was too close to Route Four, so they wanted that sign removed. They came here to the town to find out if there was a town permit. They were told me that there was no town permit. I spoke with Kevin in previous, so we just have to go by state permitting. So that's in the process of getting, moving the signs that's out of compliance by four feet. The other thing is there is a driveway easement for a house that's there in the front that Shea also owns. It was, it was on the original subdivision plan, but it was never recorded. So the lawyers are doing that paperwork now. So other than that, everything else from them is in compliance.
Out of curiosity, is DOT, I know they were requesting you to reduce your width, is that?
No, no, they're going to leave the, yeah, we're going to. Yeah, they're going to leave the width the same way.
All right, so it sounds like right now then we're, I consider moving a sign, we don't really, sometimes we don't even require signs on site plans and it's, but it exists in sign anyway, so I consider that part of the DOT process. In terms of, again, because we've got to limit any sort of discussion and stuff like that, because it wasn't a public hearing, but I think usually you guys do anyway, or usually the state keeps involved, if you can make sure, if you provide a copy of the, any of the submissions to the land use clerk, even if, even if it's an electron, as you guys, sometimes I kind of always submit electronic share files, stuff like that, even if that's provided, again, because you don't have to provide a bunch of copies because we're not sure yet what's required, but it's good for us to have a record of at least the AOT submission.
Yeah.
I think at that time, Blair, I don't know how you feel about this, but I think we could, as a board, compare the plans that were approved by our board against the AOT. And I think really is, was there substantial change to the design, scope of a stormwater design or something like that? If not, then I think it still falls under conditions of, you know, things get tweaked as part of a state permit here and there if it's a condition of approval. So I guess we'll have to review that. I'm not really sure, I guess I'm.
I think that's what we'd have to do.
Yes.
Our condition of approval is getting state approval, which they're doing. If it modifies something, we determine if it is substantial enough to justify bringing them back before us in a formal environment to present that and then support vote one.
Right, re-vote on it.
Yeah, re-vote, I guess you could say. Vote on an amendment essentially.
Yeah.
And without seeing that, I mean, we're getting the verbal explanation, I think, if there's anything that can be formally submitted so that we can have a look at it, if there is in fact a change, then I think that, I think that's the part that, I think that's the, the process that covers us the most.
And one thing too, and this is not really on you guys, but this past year there were a number of changes to our SAs regarding planning. I've actually dealt with this on projects where there's a lot of uncertainty as to what staff, if you change a width of pavement, a lot of uncertainty as to if staff can administratively approve that or what triggers some of these substantive changes. So I have some stuff I've encountered. It seems like it's very vague and I've seen sometimes where planners have just sent it back to the board as more of a, to cover them and they could just re-vote and explain that it's, it is really insubstantial, but.
I think either way you'd want to get feedback.
Yeah.
From building inspector, perhaps fire, road agent, you know, if there's something to circulate that you think would, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
They could choose to not comment.
Sistern's non-moving. I mean, a lot of the stuff is pretty well baked at that point. It's more so making sure you guys comply with the DES requirements for presentation really of the material.
Right.
So I think that's kind of where we're, thank you for coming in, first of all.
Of course.
So I think that's where we're at. If you guys could pass along, if you want to drop off a hard card, electronics should be fine initially because honestly, we're going to try and just get our bearings on it. But if you could, that's probably easiest for you.
Just copy you and all submissions to the, any.
Yeah, copy the land use clerk office. We'll, she'll dispense it to people and we'll kind of, Blair and I, I think on this one, will just kind of review it cursory and then board will see it as well, so.
There was also some conditions on there about replacing the buffer zone and we did do that and we did put up the signs and I did take pictures and I actually came and spoke to Kevin about it. So I'll make sure the new person has that as well.
Yeah, any, if you guys want to keep track of that, if you've started to tackle some of those conditions that you document.
Do you have an update on it?
Yeah, pass them along so we don't forget to.
She would be the contact person?
Okay. Yeah, I think it's plan zone, same email.
Day that I came in, I think it was Kevin's last day. I came on Thursday, it was his last day.
Yeah, it was.
I talked to him about it.
Yep. Yeah, that's fine. And then we'll just kind of, project this size is going to take a while just to get your ducks in a row. Okay, so that'll be our next step, we'll look for that electronic submission.
George, George, do you mention that you were going to be asking for a new NHB report, Natural Heritage Bureau? Because when you do an AOT, that triggers a new application to them.
We have, that is going to be submitted at the same time as the AOT. Our environmental scientist has already written up the report and everything that I've seen and that she has investigated looks, looks just fine. So that will be submitted.
Is that the wildlife habitat assessment?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
But they have a life, so they don't last very long.
Right, but the, yeah, the NHB usually would feeds into determining the scope of the wildlife habitat. Beginning of the program, it was if you got a hit, you got to investigate everything. Now it's, you can identify one or two of.
Specific, yeah.
Yeah, and before it was, it took six months to put a report together and you had to do it the right time of year, which, burn a hole is a one-time of years. So, okay. So we'll look for that electronic, at least if that's the easiest for you, electronic of the AOT submission. That's probably the more one that we would care about. If you want to include DOT, more than merit, it's good for us to have in the files, so.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
And then we'll get back to you. We'll, we'll turn around, just, I mean, you guys will wait on AOT, but we'll, we'll kind of just look at it from apple to apples.
Okay.
Will be approved, so.
Sure.
Make sure it's in compliance here.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you own the table? Did you see Ms. Jones right now?
No, we weren't, we weren't voting, couldn't vote on anything, so.
Uh, next item on the agenda, which I lost my agenda.
Zoning. It's all scribbled.
Discussion of possible zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, site plan changes. The big one on that would be the zoning, since that's got specific timelines involved.
Thank you.
So we have one that's, that was, the one that, that is most complete would be the aquifer protection district changes as proposed or as drafted by SRPC as part of a grant for Nottingham and some other communities. So was there any further discussion on that? Anything else you wanted to add to it, Mr. Haney?
So I, I do want to, I was working with, she's the one that put this together and just to, starting with, you know, we're going to speak to town. It would seem that if this required two hearings, it would be the eleventh of January and the twelfth of January. It would seem that it would be posted by Friday, December thirtieth, because the first holiday, but it would normally be, it would be the eleventh. So if it was Friday thirtieth, you'd almost have to figure that town council would need to review it in advance of that and get it back from them by the twenty-eighth to allow us some time to finish up editing it. So, point is, don't really have too much time. If we want town council review it before it's posted.
Warren articles, we're playing on the ballot.
For the first public hearing, can we send it out?
It's, I think it's helpful to send it out, but we don't necessarily need to put back, but we'd like to have it back for the first public hearing so that we can, if we have to make any kind of changes to hold the second public hearings. So we, if we, if.
So they could hear this.
If we, if we, if we held the first public hearing on January eleventh for any zoning change and then we had substantive changes to that, I believe we'd have to hold another, a second public hearing.
What are these?
Sorry.
I have nothing here that tells me anything about what we're talking about.
Talked about it last, last meeting.
This is from the workshop that we had at.
Oh, I wasn't at the workshop, so that's why I don't.
So there was.
Sorry, that explains exactly why I'm sitting here wondering what we're talking about.
So there was a, so SRPC, so Nottingham was one of the communities that was involved in being awarded a grant through SRPC to review our aquifer protection district, overlay district, to potentially strengthen it, add some language.
By strengthen, make more restrictions for people to do anything on there, correct?
I mean.
That's the.
Yes.
Let's be, I'm just straightforward.
Yeah, it's not opening it up.
Exactly, it's not, so making it more stringent than what we are, so when we go, so. For instance, we'll use the case of the Water Cross, since that's an Aquifer District, the fact that, that that was allowed. We'd be strengthening it to make that not allowed in the future for areas like that.
Not necessarily.
Well, I'm the same, but why are we strengthening what we have now?
It's not, it's not restricted, some of it's cleaning up some of the language.
Wasn't part of it to, was it new RSAs that drove it?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there was, yeah, so they, they made a grant available because of the new RSAs, and the state had put together a model set of language, so you're, you know.
So we're just updating what we have.
Yeah, it's an update, um, I don't consider.
We're adding new covenants or anything to our zoning order, it's already says.
Right, so, um, for example, uh, the model suggests, um, if anybody adds a new or expands a use, that no more than fifteen percent or twenty-five hundred square feet of impervious surface should be created. Right now, ours says ten percent, right, so, um, it's more restrictive than the fifteen percent. Um, but we don't have a square feet, square footage number, um, which we might wanna add, because if you have a larger site, ten percent could be substantial, right, ten percent. Acres, um, which would seem, seems a lot, so, uh, it was recommended to add, you know, a square footage that went along.
If you had a large industrial place, an acre parking area wouldn't be outrageous.
Might not.
But we didn't, we didn't add that, I don't see that in here, so I don't see where we changed, we just, we see it still being at ten percent in the draft language.
It, it was, it was one of those things that I'm supposed to ask you.
Okay.
Wanted to do that.
So right now we don't have it in the draft language that we have, so it's saying, okay, so under use regulations B, maximum lot coverage for B. You know, we just specify that no more than ten percent of a single lot, uh, can be rendered impervious, so if Mr. Haney's indicating, you know, we can also add ten percent. Or, uh, and or, um, whichever, you know, a specific square footage. I don't know, uh.
Uh, the other question was, uh, do you want to include wellhead protection areas in that as part of this one? Currently, it's just your Aquifer area.
So that would be changing, if we were to add that in, that would be imposing some restrictions on current lots that aren't in existence now.
Essentially, yeah, because the lot, the boundaries are not exactly the same.
We talked about amending that next year as a possibility.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause we would have to. I know there's like RSA language about if a change is impacting a certain number of properties or fewer, like you have to like send out notice directly to, to those, I think it's like a hundred. So, I, I don't remember that specific, or, and it may not be pertinent to this, but I, I think that part may be a best practice, but it's, um. Would definitely require, I think, more public input.
You're still referring to the impervious.
No, the, I'm sorry, to the wellhead protection area, so, as part of this, there was potential of adding, so we have, we have our Aquifer Protection District, which we already have mapped out. Um, there was a potential of adding a wellhead protection area as well, which was gonna, which is basically going around the current community wells.
It was this map that.
This one right here.
Yeah.
That, um.
Want to hand that to John, so we can take a look, those are the round things.
So, this was my printout, I failed the printing in color, so anything in yellow, it was like kind of the new area that might be added if you included wellhead protection areas. So again, what that means is that in the size of circle depends on the number of houses it's serving or the size of the, the size of the well, um. That proves well volume.
This is if you wanna see, so this would be Aquifer well.
No, I think it points well taken, I've heard that.
So.
Sort of tangential.
Houses right there.
Bring in new parcels.
Camelot's a one.
About the circles.
So my opinion that for now, we leave off the verbiage about wellhead protection area, we don't amend the map to include that as a.
Uh, and this one gets a little wonky, uh, right now the. If there is a, um. So the relief valve, so to speak, is, uh, special exemptions, which goes to the board appeals, uh. But does the board want to, um, require conditional use permit instead, uh. For non-conforming lots, um, since, you know, the. This board is the one that reviews these, uh, considerations and, uh, you know, might have different skill sets amongst the board as a person for it.
I think that was my comment, was I think it's a good habit if we created some of these conditional use permits is, if it's an item, I think the. Three special exception provisions?
So it's A through G, special exceptions using regulated substances, is that the part you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, there's also, like, part, well, section, this whole, like, section E, special exceptions for lots of record. Uh, there's like subpart one, two, and three, and that three has the A through G that you wrote. I do agree.
I'm looking at what I noticed, I'm not looking at the exact language, I guess, of, of, but yes, it, it's a couple of places, uh, just non-conforming lots.
It would definitely be in, when we've gotten requests, when, well, we've had some projects that I think have been, or I think there's even a potential for a large one that will be in the Aquifer zones. We're gonna be intimately reviewing these projects on a site plan or subdivision perspective.
Certainly.
I think it's dis- it's disconnected to then force them to go to do a special exception with the zoning board, where again, there's not that.
Impair additional fees.
You know, just inherently, the, the zoning board doesn't need to look into as much detail or, I guess, through the same lens as that we would.
Okay.
And I think that's where the intent of the special exception is, has to be considered a part of the whole project, not just, we'd like to do this.
Okay, so, so the potential change to this would be anywhere it mentions a special exception would be converted to a conditional use permit, maybe apply for?
Yeah, so, so E right now says special exceptions for lots of record, um, you know, that would be a conditional use.
And we've laid out the criteria, A through D would be the criteria to, to, to gauge the CUP against?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That's what it looks like, that's what it's.
And then same thing for, um, two, that would just be additional.
Yeah, that's sort of like a, like, two was like a condition, I guess you could say in a way, if you are granted a special exception or a CUP, you'll develop a stormwater. At the swift end of the, you should request it.
So we would say for two, it says special exception shall develop, it would say, uh, an application requesting a conditional use permit shall develop, shall submit.
Yes.
Stormwater management plan, again, the reason I'm hashing out the language is, you know, we gotta get this published if we're gonna publish it. So we, we have more familiarity now with conditional use permits in, than, than, than we did in the past, and we have several of them on, on, in the books now. Um, again, as Mr. McKinnon pointed out, so a special exception, if they want, if an applicant wants that, it's slightly less cumbersome to the applicant than a tr- a full variance is. Um, yet, but they still do have to pay, you know, pay for an application fee, a butter notices, and then appear before the ZBA. For a special exception or a variance, whereas a conditional use permit, um, keeps purview at this board, uh, it lays out the criteria to approve one, so it, it gives us, it kind of restricts us. In some point, but it also, um, lets us set the rules for allowing it, um, and the big difference is conditional use permits, if they are. Appealed, they do not go to the, the ZBA, they go to the Superior Court. So I, uh, for this case, I mean, I, I think I'm with Ms. McKinnon, I like the idea of making this conditional use permit instead of a special exception. Where as long as the, the applicant applies to the conditional use permit with their application, they don't need to do separate butter notices, if they don't, and they come up during the, the plan hearing. And it substantially changes the scope of the application, then they would have to have a butter re-notification, but it wouldn't be another, you know, application fee, we would just have to continue. Before we'd hear the case, like we've done in, in a lot of cases.
So I think I'm, I think that makes sense, and I think the only thing to note is we might need to just glance at the actual body of the conditional use permit. But I think sometimes we have like multiple sections in there that apply to come different things.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure we're not increasing the size of our application, to be honest, I've been looking at it, being like, I've been thinking as I see some of these commanders, could we even take two of them, combine them or something like that to shorten them some?
I think I looked at, I think it was, I forget exactly which town, but I'm like, I looked at their conditional use documentation, I'm like, oh, that's like one so much simpler and so much clearer than ours, so.
If you find one, let's pass it, because we can always amend the application.
Yeah, I've, I actually downloaded and saved it because I'm like.
We should, we should put that on the agenda for, yeah, if you find one, send it, please, so we can, um, you know, again, if we could streamline some of our things, it makes it easier for the applicant, easier for staff, easier for the board. Without losing anything.
Yeah.
That's a win for everybody, and like Ms. McKinnon said, that's, that's a, you know, public hearing and we, we adopt the, the new application, um.
Yeah.
Format, instead, it's not a, it's not a warrant article.
Okay, so that isn't something that would have to go as part of this?
No.
No, I think it's just.
No, but it doesn't have to be dealt with yet.
No, we have to, we have to specify the criteria for a CUP.
Yeah, but it's in there.
Which are in there.
Yep, yeah, of the actual applicant.
We can handle that as a public hearing, right, we can amend it, then you just.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a document.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so then the, the last one, that, I'd like to give clarification, um. In the same ballpark, special exemptions, uh, shall submit a spill control and countermeasure plan, SPCC, to the, and then fill in the blank. Um, fire chief, health officer, emergency management officer, um, who in the town would be best suited to do something like that? So if there's, uh, kind of like substance to get oil spill or something like that, or some kind of chemical.
I have a project right now where it's, it's the code enforcement and fire chief both get a copy, because the fire chief looks at it from what he cares about from the flammable side, the code enforcement looks at it from what's, what's a chemical that can. Out of a garage or something like that.
Maybe the town administrator, because the police might want to, to look into something, you know.
Yeah, you, that's true, you could get some one-off thing that is a security issue.
So if it goes to the town administrator who passes it on to, maybe just police.
Say at a mis- at a minimum, fire chief and.
Uh, yeah.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
I mean, there's references further down on the, um, the lineups designated agent, um.
It's always a good thing to have.
Yeah, are we seeing with the designated agent, should, should be the administrator?
Yeah.
We could say also the town administrator, who shall determine, uh, with, you know, with input from. You know, I don't want to put this anywhere else, the fire chief, code enforcement.
They can delegate, but they can be the receiver.
Right.
It's better if the town administrator sees it, because then if it's gonna have to be distributed out to whatever causes, he can let everybody know.
Or she.
Or she, right.
So that way, that way it, uh.
Keeping you honest.
But it says who shall determine.
Right now, we don't know, it could be either way, so.
Um, I had a quick question, because I wasn't able to make the, the workshop meeting, um, this is just one, we've always required the hydrogeologic study, correct? Like, that's not a new section, right?
For, um.
For being, like, if Aquifer Falls, then.
Mm-hmm, that's always, yeah.
I was, it was just.
It's always considered, I don't think it's always been required.
So that's what I was wondering.
In Aquifer?
Because of, there's a.
In Aquifer District.
More specifically, I think it was a, I think the Aquifer Zone falls on a part of the core file, and I remember there's specifically a subdivision that like, I think, I don't remember if they did have to go get a variance to avoid that. It's a cost thing for like, I think it was like a two or three lot subdivision, it can be ten thousand dollars for hydrogeologic study, so that, that was there, but I couldn't remember if they had to go get a variance or.
No, they got one, they got a study.
They did?
Yeah, they did, they had the study done, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right now it's in there, uh, you know, subsection five, um.
Okay.
Shall be required at the applicant's expense if developments involve a subdivision of three lots or greater.
That's where it is.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That was a criteria, a minor subdivision.
Three lot, that's where it was, okay. Um, and then lastly, the number six design, so the last one, six A nitrate loading, do we always, do we have anything on that? So it specifies that no development shall cause the nitrate nitrogen concentration to exceed five milligrams per liter in the groundwater beyond the site. Is that, that's kind of, I guess.
Who pays for this testing for this?
I'm not even sure how that, so I think where this, is that, is this because of fertilizer loading in a lot of places?
That's what it sounds like.
This is, this is language that's.
It is, that, that's currently in our, in our zoning.
Yeah.
So, that's currently.
Honestly, I noticed, I'm like, I don't think I ever noticed it before, and I'm like, I don't think we've ever, I mean, I don't think, well, it's two cases, but there is a calculation to do it, it's a pain. About your nitrate, it's a water quality calculation, but that might be something for us to think about, because I don't think we've actually ever.
Killed on nitrogen or something.
Even if it's a subdivision of a lot, without a home imposed, in theory, that home, they have to assume a nitrate loading for the lot. To stay with.
So.
I've never even thought of it.
I mean, is, I, is nitrate naturally just sitting there in the ground in high quantities, or is it something that, the only way to get nitrate is for. The homeowner or landowner to add nitrate to the land?
I think in theory you can, if you cut grass, like, there's a component of this that's there, but that takes a lot of it, it's, it's usually fertilizer driven.
Yeah.
People, people thrown, like, want that perfect Scots lawn that they want, that's usually where your high nitrate.
So how do you police somebody who goes by and go, wow, your lawn looks great, you must be putting a lot of nitrate, so now we're gonna come after you?
That's part of it.
Is that, is that how we?
Well, because under this, they would have to, to.
I'm asking, and I, and I get, not to sound again, you know, I'm, I'm not for doing, you know, having to add a lot of nitrate group, but I'm more on this than the fact that we're gonna put something in there. But how are we gonna enforce what we're putting in there?
Well, I, but, it's already in there, I guess, apparently, and I'm like.
Or we're still, how are we enforcing this?
Yeah, you see that, that happens, that, that happens a lot, I mean, it, it does, sometimes language isn't as good as.
Because we can't tell across, we can't say to somebody, you can't, don't have a super green lawn, you know, and then they look at us two years later and their lawn is perfectly green, what are we gonna say back? I think you're adding nitrate to it, so I think it's super green, even though we told you not to.
Well, to your point, then, the only thing.
I mean, how do we make them test it?
The only thing the town can do is, the town can, you, you can't make them do it, but then it's like, well, the town has the purview that they could find a way to test one, I spent five grand on testing.
So for, but for, but for us, for.
Our tax is not high enough already?
I just don't, I understand the purpose.
So for, for us, for us as a board, so this is language that's already in there, we're not making that part more or less restrictive, proposed.
I just noticed, yeah.
We would be looking at this only during the initial, a, a plan coming before, so that the, the design coming before us, if they're proposing something that would have the potential of increasing.
I guess it's for the builder that's doing the lot, you tell the builder, don't do it, but then after.
After that, after that, it falls to the, the enforcement arm of code enforcement, so.
The logistics of it, yes, I don't know how you do it, but from a board perspective.
With it, with it in there, it gives code an option, opportunity to potentially enforce something, if there was, my guess is it wouldn't be, it would be, it would have to be some kind of egregious, you know.
You, you, you'd probably have to, you'd have to see noticeable impact on adjacent property, whether it's through.
Yeah, probably.
Some, somebody's well testing that's in a butter.
Where testing is required.
Correct, um, yeah, so I think.
And again. I'll try to be argumentative, I'm just trying.
And don't you have, do we have to be worried about things that are selectively enforced? If some things are, I mean, that's how we have won lawsuits and, and proceeded in the, in the past, is that we are consistently in a, in our enforcement.
We're not, so we're not in the.
Sounds like we're talking about something that's pretty selectively enforced.
And we're not on the enforcement arm, so all we can do is have best practices and, you know.
I know, but we're setting up something that can't be select, can't.
This is already in, it's, so we've established, this is already in the code, I just don't, I don't think I ever noticed it was there, so it's, it's already in there, we're not touching it, but. It's more of those things, I've seen it where on the planning board perspective, if we do get an application, say for a large subdivision that's going to have. You get an application for an open space subdivision that might be coming in in the. that's going to have, you get an application for an open space subdivision that might be coming in in the aquifer zone. You can place provisions, especially if there's de-restrictions involved with product. You can restrict, um, like fertilizer stuff, but you can.
Aren't we doing that on the one we just talked about today?
No, they took that all out.
So.
And we, and we weren't requiring it. That's what they wrote up.
So we can, um.
That's just something to keep in mind.
But they wrote it probably according because they read our zoning law.
But if someone was coming before us and they want to create, you know, very large animal feed lot, for example, in the aquifer zone. Again, we can move on.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's go. So I have enough to, to create language that, you know, to review, but post it and, and review by this board at, at a hearing.
So what I would like to do, I think in the way, what we've done this in the past, is we just hold a vote to move these to public hearing. That is not the vote to put it on the warrant article. I think we've always had a second vote after the public hearings, based on the input from the public, what, what we do from there. I believe. So what I would recommend that we do is take a motion tonight to just, um, based on the language we've amended, to notice this, add this to the notice for a public hearing for January 11th.
I'll make a motion that the, um, notice for January 11th, meeting at 7:00 PM, uh, the modifications and updates to Article 3A, the Aqua Protection District. The town of Nottingham zoning ordinance.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second and, um.
I'll even say as amended, the, the language as amended.
Just make sure a well had, wasn't in there anywhere, it wasn't added in, and we, um, added it. So, I'm sorry, that was a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Mooney. Is there any further discussion? And again, this is not, this does not put it on the ballot. This is to put it to a public hearing.
A little, little minor discussion. I just want to make sure that on, um, it's on the third page, it, it's a purple three. Special exemptions shall submit a spill control plan to the, I'd like to make sure that the fire chief is one of the first people that gets that. Because they are coding, they will enforce it if this is asked.
So that's what we were talking about, and that's what we mentioned, they'd go to town administrator, and then they would seek to develop their response, would seek the input of really inspector, fire chief, police chief as, you know.
So you don't want the fire chief to be number one, you want town administrator.
I'll go to them at the same.
The idea is that the TA was so that it gets dispersed to all those people?
Mm-hmm.
You could even say to the town administrator with consultation from town department. Anyway, I'm just specifying who.
I mean, yeah, I, I can tweak the language to say with input from all town boards, or a, a town.
As appropriate, sure.
The reason why you should go to the TA, and first of all, is everybody is, because let's say right now, our highway department guy, Sean is out.
Yeah.
So we have Mike that's taking care of responsibilities. So if you sent it to Sean's email, it ain't going anywhere. Or call his phone, he's still going to make us like a phone call. Chief, well, we have deputy chief too. The chief was out, uh, for family purposes, was away for a couple of weekends because he had to do something. So if that situation had happened, you'd have to be able to contact deputy chief. So that's why I'm going through the administrator who is, knows who's not here.
Yeah.
Who's going away, who's what, because they're keeping contact with him to let them know what their schedule looks like, or her. That would be the.
Yeah.
Proper channel to go through, in my opinion, that that's.
I think we're in agreement. I think it was just adding some verbiage to say, to help them, to help guide. If they read this and say, well, I'm now in charge of all this, it's to say, no, you know, the town administrator will be the facilitator.
They're not the one that has.
Will be the facilitator and will seek input from fire chief, police chief.
Everybody knows it's a problem. We're all going to get together and say, who's going to go to it, whatever they're.
To draft the response, yep. So that you get one cohesive spot, the person that, that is in charge of that and bring it back to us. All right. So we have a motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Mooney, with some amendments to the lot, the verbiage there. Is there any further discussion? All is a favor, please say aye.
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 All is opposed, motion carries seven zero. So we will, uh, make sure that that gets noticed for public hearing within the timeline, um, for January 11th. All right.
Should I ask to send it to the town council in advance of this, or should I wait?
I, once we have the language, I'll send it to town council.
Okay.
Yep, so it's in the final verbiage, so we could post it, is required, um. I had suggested that we add impervious surface definition. The language I had proposed was from Portsmouth. I read that the last time, I'm going to read it again, um, so that, impervious. So right now, we mentioned impervious surface, we don't define it. Many towns use a very similar definition. It's, and I think it comes right out of the RSA, so maybe it's kind of a moot point, but I think it would be good to put it in the, um, in the, in our definitions, so.
Go for it. I think we agree that that's the one to go for.
Yeah, simple, simple's good.
Impervious surface, any modified surface that cannot effectively absorb or infiltrate water. Impervious surface includes but are not limited to roofs, paved areas such as driveways, parking areas, walkways. Impervious surfaces also include decks, patios, gravel, crushstone surfaces, unless such structures or surfaces have been designed to effectively absorb and infiltrate water. And again, that matches pretty much the RSA. So, um, there's any further discussion on adding that definition to our zoning ordinance?
That basically matches what, uh, shoreline protection uses.
Anybody that can make a motion on that?
That we put it on the January.
Yes.
11th. Um, I make a motion that we, um, put the impervious surface definition on the January 11th, 2023 meeting.
Second that.
That's a motion by Ms. Anderson, um, second by Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? All is a favor, please say aye.
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 That motion carries seven zero.
I, we said steep slopes. Pause that.
I think, pause, I think we need to come up with the language for roadway setbacks. Um, was another one, we were talking about adding it to zoning ordinance, Article Two. And then, uh, the residential agriculture and CI districts. Um, the, the language we had discussed at the last meeting was new road shall be placed a minimum of 50 feet from any property line.
Yep, I think that's what we discussed, right?
So Blair, I don't know if you're doing like a track, is that, would, would you be comfortable, like, since you're drafting up the language for the aquifer, to draft up the language on these, with how it would show up on a warrant for, uh, these two?
Yes.
With how it would show on the warrant? Was there any further discussion on, on that?
So just to clarify, this is assuming, I, I know it's, this is one we have a concern that somebody places a 50-foot right-of-way, per se, for a new road along a, a buttered parcel, instead of spacing that lot.
Yeah, there's nothing right now that.
And we're deemed that this bar, that we're deemed that this buffer would be essentially go 50 feet off away from that abutting parcel, and that's the start of your right-of-way, and you just don't go, continue going away to create. So you essentially have 50-foot right-of-way and a 50-foot buffer if there's an abutting parcel, correct?
Yeah, 50, 50-foot buffer, and then the edge of the right-of-way would start. The nearest edge, the nearest that the edge of the right-of-way could start would be the 50-foot line.
So the only one I, I think I've been thinking about on this one is, and I, obviously we have to look and see in town, is there's oftentimes lots that are left with 50 or 60-foot, wide necks, and with the intent that they were for construction of access or roads. Maybe via how we word it, there can be exceptions. But in that case, if you just write it vaguely as a driveway setback, and that's an unbuilt, you cannot build a road in. I agree that some, I, I think there needs to be something, but I'm trying to think about how we, it, it's unique cases where you have 300 feet of frontage, and somebody wants to put a road in, but they want to shift that road to one side because of what lots fit. But I wanted, I just want to make sure we're not going to cause it. And council may pick up on that as well, that if we've specified that, you'd, you'd have scenarios all over the state where you have 50, 50-foot was the standard, where you have 50-foot neck for 500 feet to get to 20 acres. So I don't have a good answer on that right now. I'm just thinking in terms of the wording of that, we'd have to be careful because that might get picked up as conflict.
Let's pause that one then. We hate to do that, though.
I know.
You know, we can.
Well, off the cuff, I'm not sure how to come up with language that would protect us in both of those scenarios.
We could potentially still move forward with the public hearing on it, and then see what the feedback is, see what the feedback is from council, and then, based on both those, either amend the language for a second public hearing or table it and address it.
I'd be fine, I'd be fine with that if, just so if we don't want to table it right now, at least we can get it, we can come up with something to get it to the first hearing.
That's a good idea.
I think the alternate, alternative to a temporary, like a temporary Band-Aid for it, that is less, you know, restrictive, would be that we would, based on feedback, you, you could always, we could amend the subdivision regs and site plan regs. But again, it's kind of creating zoning in those, but new roadways are always going to fall into the subdivision regs and site plan regs. So, in my opinion, you potentially could Band-Aid it, uh, until you get to a warrant article again.
That's something I'll put on my plate too. I'll see if I can do a little bit more research on, if there's surrounding towns.
Because it would kick all those to, to zoning, it would kick all of them to ZDA.
Right, then you're now for, this would immediately trigger variances for any scenario where like, you're under a couple hundred.
And I know, I know in our subdivision regs, we've talked about that neck area, those reserve strips not being, uh, no reserve strips being left. So I don't know if that's kind of, you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if I think.
Preventing those. All right.
Specifically on that.
So is there any further discussion on potentially adding a 50-foot, um, roadway setback from property lines to the residential agricultural and commercial industrial district? We specifically left off the town center district on that discussion. There's none, a motion to potentially move forward on that would be.
That's something we're going to ask the mayor to help with, or should we try to be trying to turn around some input actually? Are we just going to?
Yeah, we, sorry, we, we discussed the, so we were going to amend, uh, zoning, article two in the residential agricultural and commercial industrial district, um, adding this space where it says new road shall be placed a minimum of 50 feet from any, any property line.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, that was under our requirements too. Um, subsection C, 1, 2, 3, and this would be a four. Um, shared driveways, shared driveways, driveways and accesses, and number four would be new roads shall be placed a minimum of 50 feet from any property line.
Can I make Mason use whatever Sue just said?
What?
Can you make a motion? To use all your subsections and sections?
No, 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 it's just clean. It's just, you know, right here in the ZO on page three, just add a number four with the driveways.
So we have a motion by Mr. McKinnon, um, to add the, the language for a public hearing as well. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all is a favor, please say aye.
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 All is opposed, that motion carries, uh, seven zero. Uh, remaining cleanup removed from the, uh, no, I think we're going to leave the dependencies in for now. Um, update street names and correct scenic roadmap numbers. Those would be.
Scenic Road is the one that's been bugged, and it's kind of messing with applications. The tax map is wrong?
Yeah, it's a 911 maps instead of, uh, tax maps.
I thought we, we were going to pause on that one because some of the roads hadn't still been named.
Yeah, that's correct. Street names, yeah.
Yep.
We can correct the scenic road map numbers. I don't think that's, that's not going to be impacted by the road names, as far as I know. None of the scenic roads, most of the E911 changes were just those, the new, the, the, not the roads.
Section.
No, there's, oh.
You asking what the new scenic, the 911, what are you asking?
No, none of this, I don't think any of the scenic roads were impacted by renaming.
No, no.
So I think we can move forward with that, to correct the, the scenic road map numbers.
That has to go before the voters?
It's in the zoning.
Oh.
So that's an appendancy, so.
We're going to have a lot of articles.
Going to have a lot of articles.
Actually.
It's going to cost us a lot of money to print out that town.
You know what? It's not, it's not in there. It's in the subdivision regs, so.
All right, then let's, let's just handle that and change.
We can clean that, we can clean that up.
The last item that we had addressed, um, was adding a buffer for, for wetlands, a 25-foot vegetative buffer, um, subject to CUP.
Yeah.
So that's going back to our, our, our.
I think that's a good idea.
Wetland. Our wetland conservation art, areas, so Article 3B, wetland conservation areas. We don't have any buffer right now to the wetlands. We, we talk about, actually, you know, disturbances to the wetland itself and back directly to the wetland, but we all allow a driveway, anything else to go in right on the edge of the wetland with, with no, no buffer. Um, so we talked about adding language in to add a vegetative buffer, like a no disturb vegetative buffer, 25-foot, so.
What, what, uh, which subsection of the 3B is the.
So we talked about having it separate, so three, so Article 3B, wetland conservation areas, um, three.
This is the term of four?
Yeah.
So we want to, are you saying we want?
There should be a 25-foot no disturb vegetative buffer around vernal pools as defined by certified wetland scientists, which is not eligible for conditional use permit. So we talked about adding a separate number in.
Yep, like a number four, well, I guess you could renumber, you'd want to probably keep the two right next to each other.
Yeah, so there should be a 25-foot no disturb vegetative buffer around wetlands, um, as defined by certified wetlands. And, and this vegetative buffer is eligible for a conditional use permit. Which is the, the difference there.
So the 25-foot wetland buffer from the, the wording, uh, structures such as driveways or?
I think we'd just leave it clean, so we'd, we'd mimic the same language. That's number three for vernal pool, which is just two sentences. Um, so where, where it says, there should be a 25-foot no disturb vegetative buffer around, instead of vernal pools, we'd say wetlands as defined by certified wetland scientists. This vegetative buffer is eligible for conditional use permit. So that just keeps it clean, so it's just. So it's saying in general, there should be no disturbance next, right next to the wetland. But we're getting, we're making it less restrictive and saying that they can get a conditional use permit, which would then fall under our, uh, our things there.
So then I'll make a motion that, uh, we notice for the January 11th meeting at 7:00 PM, the addition of, uh, under Article 3B, a new number four subsection stating there shall be a 25-foot no disturb vegetative buffer around wetlands as defined by a certified wetland scientist. This vegetative buffer is eligible for a conditional use permit. And with that new number four, the, the subsequent numbers would just be numbered.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Mooney. Is there any further discussion? All is a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, that motion carries seven zero. Okay, so as far as I know, that, that cleans us up for what we had for our, our self-identified action items for this year, for zoning. I think we can tackle, let's see what happens with those, we can tackle in the new year. Updates subdivision regulations, site plan regulations, because those require public hearings, not warrant articles. Um, unless anybody would like to make sure we talk about some tonight. I'd say we move on to, uh, the next items. We do have a MYLR to sign tonight, so I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion on any other zoning changes that?
No.
That I missed?
Job well done.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a MYLR to sign. It was, uh, one, I think conditions were already met, but something got spilled on the original MYLR by the applicant before it got to, to the registry, so. One, there's one that we cannot sign tonight. We have, uh, a condition for, so we have the Deberto subdivision that had a conditional approval. The last remaining condition that we were waiting on was town council input and review. So town council has submitted some comments, um, thank you for reminding me of that. I'm going to, I plan on drafting a letter. I'll send it through the land use clerk, back to the applicant. It's representative for what the town council's input. I'm gonna, I plan on drafting a letter, I'll send it through the land use clerk, back to the applicant, it's representative for what the town council's input was, somewhat was separating out some, some items. I'll just say, so this, the, the letter I plan on addressing to the applicant is about the drainage agreement and drainage easement, having those separated, um, with some additional information there. There's a declaration of covenants that's referenced by the bylaws, but it's not in the documents. And then we need the article of agreement for the HOA from the bylaws, so there's a few items outstanding before I think we should sign off on that. So, I will send, I will draft a letter and have it, have it sent through the land use office. Public comment, this is the time of night we save for public comment from anybody that'd like to speak to us, uh, has questions about the processes or, or anything, and we can't speak about specific properties, project applications. Nobody's here tonight, so I'll move on. We have one, two, three, four, six sets of minutes. I don't know if anybody's had, hopefully everybody's had a chance to review them, there are three copies out. I'd like to make sure we get some of these approved if possible, unless there's major withholdings. Very worried, but that's okay, it's late. You'll notice our minutes are a bit longer, so these are all drafted now, um, based on the recordings, so there's a lot of detail in them. I know I had an edit to one specifically.
Are you adding words, are you adding punctuations, or like how somebody said something?
So, no, in general edits will be changing of verbiage that's in here to clarify, so if it's punctuation and things like that.
I'll give the comma, please.
I think it's important, but especially.
Out at nine thirty?
The, the one for me that, that I wanted to make sure that we cleared up, there was an unofficial minutes of November ninth, line number one twenty-three. In that paragraph, it was a back and forth between the board and the applicant regarding the yield plan. In, in the, the way the minutes were written, it said he would be willing, the applicant would be willing to propose a standard subdivision that would have fewer lots in no protected area. That's not what the applicant had indicated, they, I believe they indicated that they would, they would propose a standard subdivision that would have larger lots in no protected area. So my, my edit on that one was changed fewer to larger, line one twenty-three of the minutes of November ninth. So we can either move forward on any of these, all these, we could table them, but it'd be great to kind of clear up some of these before, uh.
Were there any other amendments that anybody had on any of the other ones?
No, and the reason, so we used to do this during, during meetings, it kind of got to a point where some were being drafted, edited by email, uh, back to, to whoever drafted the minutes. The interim town administrator pointed out that best practice through, you know, the right to know law and everything else is to make sure that these are always amended and edited during public hearings. So the drafts are being published online within five days to meet the RSA, and now any edits, major edits, um, have to go through this, so hopefully we won't have six sets to do in a night.
It's part of that too, it's like if somebody has multiple edits, if it's substantial on the two, you can also mark up a document and during the public hearings, simply pan that in.
Yes.
Not to rifle through every single one.
I encourage that, if you have, if you have multiple edits, you know, drafting something up, labeling the date of the minutes and the line item numbers that you're editing and what that it is, like, you know, delete this, add this, we'll speed that up because then we can also hand that in and make it much easier for the person transcribing them.
Want a motion?
Love one.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, October fifth, twenty twenty-two, October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, eleven, uh, November ninth, twenty twenty-two as amended, and eleven, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
That's a motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Ms. Mooney. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Last item I have that's not on here, I can't remember if we adopted formally the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule. I had kind of drafted it up in the, uh, there a lot, or someone in the town office, probably Kelly, put it together, so we have kind of what I'm formally proposing. We can change these li, in the future, but for now, this is a, this is our formal hearing date. Since I can't remember if we adopted it, I think a motion just to, uh.
I hope that we adopted.
So do we not have one this year that's business only after elections?
Usually do, no business.
So the, the only thing I said.
Is there one in March, mid-March?
March.
March twenty-second.
March twenty-second.
There you go, that's the one it's gonna be.
March twenty-second.
No business.
No business.
When are the elections this year?
I don't know the exact date, but.
Just trying to remember, because.
Usually the second week, I think.
Right.
So, March eighth, we would still be active board, March twenty-second would be the new members.
Right, exactly.
So March twenty-second, no, no.
Usually it gives about a week to go by town clerk gets sworn in.
So, okay. So would anybody like to make a motion that we approve the tentative, or approve the twenty twenty-three calendar, um, with the edit being that the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three meeting is marked as no business election of officers?
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Mr. Anderson, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Select Board, South Board member updates, uh, just run around the table. Uh, Ms. Jones?
We will be having our first CIP meeting tomorrow night at six thirty. I will be there a shortened period of time and so will the Chair of the Budget Committee, because we have a Budget Committee meeting at seven o'clock. And this is an important time of the year for Budget Committee, so I don't know how much I will hear or see, but there I've reviewed the stuff, it seems pretty straightforward, but the first meeting is, uh, Ben Bartlett will be chairing it from the, from the Department of, from the Board Selectman.
And that, that's the CIP, you said, okay.
Pardon?
That's the CIP meeting?
That's the CIP meeting.
Yeah, once there's a movement on that, we'll, we'll need to know, because we'll have to act on a few things that that impacts us for, for, uh, impact fee specifically.
Right.
So once we have some direction from.
There seem to be a lot of things about roads and stuff, but other than that, I don't know how much they would impact us.
And there, there was a point of questioning, came, that came from interim TA about the CIP committee, because it's a planning board process.
You can bring it up right now, go for it.
As to, as to who, as to who runs it. So, it's kind of hard to find back in the minutes and town meetings as to if it was ever adopted formally, it was adopted formally, but who oversees it? So, is that, are we required to create it, the subcommittee and everything, or?
As per the state regulations, we, the planning board was always one that was to do it. How Nottingham always, well, in my tenure, uh, being on the CIP, going back to when I was on the planning board as a member of the CIP, ten years ago, or nine years ago, it was always facilitated by the BOF, the Board of Selectmen, as kind of the, the guider of, you know, picking the members off and, you know, who's gonna be on it, who's gonna be on it, and the board saying, oh, you'll be the representative, you'll be the representative.
Right.
And we've never actually done it as the planning board being the
facilitator.
The facilitator of the, uh, of the thing.
Sure.
So, going forward, I think we're just gonna stick with the way we're doing it now anyways, so because there's nothing that says we have to do it a certain way, which is kind of.
So, thank you for being on that. Look forward to the, to hearing what comes out of it. Mr. Davies?
Nope.
Mr. Anderson?
Just, um, mention of the Facility Advisory Committee, which I'm chairing. We're, the number one issue really that we've been bringing up is facility maintenance and, and then other things. So anyway, just a kind of a brief mention of that. There was a preliminary report to Selectmen back in October and, well, we're still working to complete that, we'll see how that goes.
The short report, isn't it?
Through that process, was, has there, has there been any kind of like discussion as to maybe outside the purview of it, to potentially like see if any of these are suitable for sale with restrictive like covenants in the, the sale documents, like to keep them looking the way they are? So awful, it's like if they're non-used by the town and they're not, you know, they're historic, so you can keep them looking the same. Let somebody else take care of them.
One of the, the areas that we haven't actually looked at yet is exactly at the historic stuff.
Yeah.
So that's on the list to, to see, yeah.
Thanks, thanks for doing that too, you know, you've got a full agenda as well, a workload. Mr. Moore? You've been busy.
Yeah, where do we start?
I think the television, by the way.
Yeah, so we have, uh, we're presently meeting with candidates for the new town administrator. Uh, we had two meetings, uh, last night, and we have two more meetings, uh, on Friday, so candidates look very good, it's gonna be a tough decision, it's nice to see that we have good quality candidates coming through. Uh, we've narrowed our budget for the Budget Committee down. Uh, we are presently sitting, which will be all discussed tomorrow night at the Budget Committee, but we're presently sitting at five percent. So we have, need another sixty-seven thousand dollars to cut out of the budgets in order to meet the four percent cap that the town voted in. Now, why is this becoming very tough? It's because of the fact that in order to retain employees for the town of Nottingham, people had to get raises so that we could be somewhat in the game of what other places are paying for these same employees. And then with inflation going up at eleven percent, ten percent, and then with health insurance going up, you know, another eleven percent, uh, it's added a very, very tough, so we're just being fun. As, as Gary just said, the, uh, Billings Committee has been very helpful but disturbing at the same time uh, for, for our condition of what we have here and what's been going on, um, and the lack of what's going on. Uh, as you guys know, our, our toilets in this building aren't functioning properly.
Again?
Did you see that sign on the, on the door?
Uh, because it's a broken line.
Again?
Again.
No, really, well, we, we actually had it scoped and looked at.
That's, that happened before.
Well, to get it fixed could be, you know, we're not talking, we could be talking tens of, tens of thousands of dollars.
Under the building or?
Oh, yeah.
Is there, is there a process where they, like, inject?
Slip line.
A slip, yeah, slip line.
Well, we're gonna look at every opportunity of what we get to do.
Slip line you can only do if it's a certain size, has to be a certain size.
But then even too, like I said, the building here, the oil, the oil, uh, tank is buried underground, well, how long has it been buried underground? Who knows the condition of the tank, you know?
That will be a fun one.
That's another, uh, environmental aspect, you know, if it starts to leak and stuff, that won't be good. So, we're talking about actually taking two, three hundred gallon tanks and putting them outside, but then we got a bit of barrier around them to protect them so no one steals the oil, being five dollar or whatever the gallons is for oil.
Yeah.
So, and rerun the lines and over, go there, uh, so these are just some lighting issues around the building that are having issues.
Is this ARPA stuff or is this stuff?
Uh, well, no, see, this is what you got, now, there's some stuff could go to ARPA, it's like the big deceptive issue, maybe. But you have to remember, there's only so much money that ARPA has.
Yeah.
And the list of what is in front of us is, can be huge. Especially if the Budget Committee, instead of wanting to cut things, wants to start making expenditures and try to use ARPA money for, I mean, that's why we gotta be very careful with where we decide to use ARPA, not to start throwing it to these simple fixes, because we could be missing out on a, a more substantial project and not have the money for it that's more needed.
That's what's wrong, because it sounded like the interim TA was making it sound like the lighting, I know there's the lighting improvements, like that was moving forward, but I assume that's just covered by general funding.
Well, we're really gonna have to sit down and start prioritizing what our needs and what our wants are.
And we replaced the boilers here, yeah, a couple of years ago, right?
But we just don't have the money.
Yeah.
At the four percent gap, you know, where years pass, you know, when you didn't have that, you could take a year where you got a six percent or seven percent and be like, wow, this stinks, it's really high this one year, but you took a lot of expenses and paid for a lot of things and did a lot of things. And in the next three years, you went and only had a two or two point five percent, you know, which kind of leveled everything out. But we can't have that, that's where this year, because of the past four years, if you looked at our things, we've always been like two percent or low.
Probably the worst year to have a tax cap.
Worst possible year, because with inflation going and everything going, so now things that you guys want, and let's say right now, ain't for Stratford Region, guess what?
Got cut.
That's absolutely gone.
You pretty much wiped out the whole budget.
So.
Also wasn't Mr. Platt though.
But I mean, there is no choice, it's kind of, you have to make cuts of where you're gonna go.
Yeah.
You know, what you don't want to do is you don't want to cut social services, we don't want to cut, you know, the, the, what we're paying for, you know, people that are getting services, you know, friendly rides and all that stuff, you don't want to start taking money from those and cutting those services. You don't want to start taking, you know, I mean, taking money from the fire department.
Well, and we've just delayed the maintenance of our infrastructure for too long.
We did it for years.
It's catching up to us.
Oh, it's, it's, and again, we're not gonna go pointing fingers of why and who and, you know, for what the reasons were, but it's, it's catching up to us, so. Uh, some big issues to deal with. Uh, but again, hopefully we'll have a new TA, uh, for January. So, which would be good. Uh, we'll just see where it comes in, and, um, yeah, there's a little stuff that's going on, but that's, I mean, those are the big notches.
Well, thank you for, uh, I know you're wearing a lot of hats right now and attending a tremendous amount of meetings, so I appreciate, uh, you being here tonight and for, uh, for being on those and, you know, bringing us that update, appreciate it.
To that point, I know some of the reasons we're gonna, we're gonna try and get representatives from this board to the Budget Committee when we get to that point, but I know some of the stuff that I think originally the intent was to defend that the board selectmen did have to remove or was removed as part of your, your kind of cut meetings there.
Well, again, we, we cut
Yeah.
a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty already, and still need to cut sixty-seven thousand more.
Right.
So I mean, we went through every line item and literally sat there saying, you know, we gotta take a little here, take a little here, take a little here.
And I'd say you guys.
And we still didn't even make it there. The reason why we're going in front of the Budget Committee is because, uh, I believe it's my suggestion, it's not a reason, but you know, some members, you know, it's their idea for the four percent, so let's.
I thought that was reasonable, yeah, because I think you guys are at the point where.
I'd like to petition the town to where we sit right now, the five percent.
I think you got, I've been, I've been watching that.
I think it's a fair number, it's a reasonable four we are, I don't think the sixty-seven that we need to cut to make this four, I think it's gonna be unreasonable and, and certain items that are gonna get cut are socially and are going to, you know, hurt. You know, and that, you know, we won't be able to make up for them even next year or the year after, it's gonna drastically make a difference and it's gonna be painful.
Yeah, I, I watched back your meetings and you guys had a lot of hard decisions, so I think it was the right decision to kind of push it to the Budget Committee next.
Well, it was a deliberative session, so budget comes out, goes deliberative session, and people there amend the budget and add add items back in, and then push it back over the four percent, does that block ever move forward?
I, you know, we haven't got there yet, so I'd have to ask, I don't, I know that. But you know, again, what we don't want to do is, is, you know, you're trying to do it right so that you don't burden, you know, the town with warrant articles.
Yeah.
Because anything you put in a warrant article, if it fails, there's nothing you can do, it's done, it's gone. You can't go and try to find money somewhere else, because it's just not there.
Keep it all your road improvements under one warrant article.
And then watch it go down, then we have no road, I mean, literally you can't take a whole budget and throw it into there and then watch the voters vote it down for some reason and then then what do you do? So I mean, again, that's where it's been a tight issue with what we had to do, you know, with moving numbers and trying to get it to a, a level, but.
I think the original interpretation I saw is that like, the four percent at least means that like the Budget Committee is not supposed to recommend.
Yeah, it's, it's the.
If the town itself through the deliberative amends a budget that ends up being over four percent.
Right.
That's the town.
When the legislative body, which is the voters.
Because at that point, you would have seen the recommendation as well, so, yeah. I'm sure there'll be some legal opinion to somebody at some point, so.
I'm sure we'll have our lawyer at our deliberation center, so we'll figure it out then too.
Um, yeah, no, nothing else for me, I'll look into maybe some of that road setback language, um, and then just, I was town voting made me think, but I think it looks like Gary and I are up for reelection this year, um, we're both two thousand twenty-three terms.
And let's make sure that everybody is up to date on who is getting voted, so we don't miss anybody that's not, so we don't need to have any private or.
I think I, I already signed you guys up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look and double check, we'll, we'll double check our schedule.
Double check to make sure who's running, who's not.
Because we've had that before, where we did not keep good record of, uh,
I don't need that to stay happening again.
And then, yes, anybody that, that's terms coming up, um, what do you plan on running or not?
January, right, re-opened.
Usually the, it's signed the day of that week or so, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. At some point, one of our maybe first quarter meetings for next year, uh, we should definitely, if, if, hopefully our agendas will lighten up for a little while. I'd love for us to have like a process procedures kind of. I'd love for us to have like a process procedures kind of meeting where I think it was glaringly brought to light when our prior land use clerk, Kevin, left and we had a gap there. So Ms. Kenny has been, you know, jumping right in and starting to dig out. I'm sure she'll have some suggestions for us. I'd love for us to, you know, just go through that and make sure that we understand the full process, who's responsible for it, where it falls, follow up, how it's done, conditions, how they're approved, how they're followed up on, who reviews them. Back and forth with town council. Just make sure that it's laid out, laid out and then, you know, we've got our rules, procedures, our bylaws. But I think it would be a, a good thing just to make sure that we have kind of documented somewhere in some fashion to make it easier for everybody.
One thing too, this board, you know, whether I sit on it next year or not, I don't know. A top priority should be redoing your master plan. We are over the ten years.
With zero dollars.
What?
With zero dollars.
Don't, hey, I'm just telling you, we're over the plan, you know, we, it's.
And we know.
We need to, that needs to be updated. Yeah, I know it's your, hey, Ken.
I think that's where it's, it's actually honestly almost a discussion with the, the TA at that point because I think, and I don't know if it was Donna that brought it up and, or maybe I brought it up. It almost seemed a little bit like the assessing, right, where we've done this thing where we put five thousand dollars or we figure out whatever, an amount that you put each year. Because otherwise if you put a line out, you have to expend it right in that year or you treat it, if you want to treat it in one month sum. You have the fund. But I think there's obviously some work that has to be done to first establish the fund and then you have the, hopefully the warrant article is something that's.
If the state allows you to establish the fund, right? Don't, isn't there?
You had the first vote to establish the fund and then you can, you can also put money in at the same time.
It's a good thought.
But again, that, by doing that process there puts us off even further.
No, so I think, I think, you know, what I foresee happening is, is this be a cleanup. We go, go through and, and clean up dates and time and, and articles, make sure the RSA's are still valid. Whatever new data has come out of the census that could be pulled and, and updated, we do that. I do not foresee the, the, a major update to the master plan.
No.
Just go around.
It shouldn't be as expensive as what we did last time.
Ideally, ideally the way to do it would be, we have a whole community input, you know, multiple sessions and some, you know, sometimes you bring in a third party to help facilitate that, and you do charrettes or whatever to, to gauge and get the community involvement to help you guide the plan and, and update it. So. Fund or, or something else on the line item budget would be needed for that to, to occur, so.
Funds is the easiest way in case you gotta push it on a year and do it over two years, but yeah.
Yeah, and impact fees, I mean, we're gonna have to figure out that too because those have to be recalculated every certain number of years. We're at that point now. Anyway, so we might be able to just kind of tweak the verbiage that's, that's, that was used by the prior consultant. But if we have to send that out for third party review, that's another, you know, cost that, that we don't have in the budget, so.
I guess suggestions when it comes to that.
So I'll, I'll reach out to, or I'll, or I may, I may ask the land use clerk to send an email to the school board to see if they have anything coming out of the, of the CIP, or I suppose wait for the CIP to come out before we do that to help us gauge the school impact fee. In the past, it's been based on two separate additions that were planned, so let's see where they're at.
Town building impact fee.
Other than that.
Am I all set? Conservation Commission?
I didn't go to the last SRPC commission meeting, but one of the things that they talked to and they sent out is kind of a housing study that they did, and I took, I did take a look at it and it's awesome. It's, it's still in draft form, but it is super informative and I think that we could take some of what they have in there and put it towards the information that we would need to update the master plan, housing section on. So I don't know when the final date would be, is gonna be released, but something to, I was really impressed with what they put together, so. Yeah, I don't know if you have anything else.
Yeah, I was gonna add to that.
Have you, are you finished?
Yeah, no, I'm finished.
Yeah, it was really scheduled, slated to be done by the end of the calendar year. I think it's been pushed maybe not like a month, but that's primarily because it's heavily data-driven and with the census's delay on getting, you know, updated data to RPCs to be able to do this work. It just kind of kept things just sort of being worked out, but yeah, it's not far off. They presented the draft, we're gonna be seeking comments. This is a statewide initiative. This isn't just a SRPC done in a box. It was spearheaded at the state level and then essentially all the RPCs got together and said, listen, why don't we like, instead of each one doing their own thing in a silo, why doesn't, we form little committees within the RPCs and, and figure out what kind of data we should go get and then go get it and then disseminate it within our, within our own little universe. So it was done, it was done very intelligently, very efficiently, and I think what you pointed out, it allowed for a lot greater breadth and depth of information you put in there. So, yeah, would absolutely heavily inform anything you might want to do in the way of a master plan and lead to whatever recommendations. I would look for it. There might even be a comment period coming up. I'm, I'm on the periphery of that. I don't know the exact.
Yeah, yeah.
I could ask her.
That's what I think workforce is gonna be.
Yeah, and it like broke out workforce and Nottingham looks really bad.
Wicked bad.
Senior housing too.
Yeah.
I mean, in a lot of ways, you know, messes is a lot of ways to mandate, you know, affordable housing through inclusionary zoning, mechanisms like that. So I think you're gonna probably see a lot of communities that really just don't have.
Yeah.
Or of course.
New Hampshire.
Was that?
I'd say mostly rural communities probably don't, whereas your cities and towns.
Might be able to have a little more subsidy involved.
You have to incentivize it for the rural communities and oftentimes that land is more valuable for something else. It's, it's not a home.
It's a good study. I think once they get it finalized and stuff and I think we'll, you know, we'll get it shared and I think it, it's gonna help us with that section of the master plan.
Taxes went up too.
Rate went down too.
Went out?
Yeah, the tax bill went out. So it's been mailed, so check if you don't get it.
I got it today.
I got mine today.
Yeah.
It went down twenty cents.
It was a Christmas card from the tax collector.
Nineteen thirty-two to nineteen eleven. Which you know what means? Buy more land because more houses come in, low tax rate, developers love it.
It's, well, but the values are higher, so that's a thing, so it's.
Well, that means they make more money. So that's a perfect reason.
Values are up, yeah. And I did look, we're, we're comparable to, I think we're lower than Lee and Barrington.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's why I don't think this is really for.
Northwest, Northwest is lower than us somehow, so.
We're making a motion to adjourn.
Well, I say, Kenny, anything else for us?
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, the opportunity. There is another mile or two that was, um, Pickens.
Yeah, that's the one that I think got spilled on.
The one that spilled on it and then this one was, um, oh, no, that's not the one that spilled. So the Pickens is a, a different one, so there's two.
Okay, yeah, there should be Pickens and DeBerto. Pickens.
Um, no, not DeBerto, so.
Okay.
Oh, Priest Road. So that's the one that got the spill on it and then there's the Pickens one.
Okay.
That's separate.
DeBerto's on hold.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll have to make sure we look at both those and sign them. Last meeting of the year. Thank you all. Again, another long meeting. Appreciate everything, all of you for, uh, everything you've contributed to this board this year. Again, there's no pay, but, you know, it, it is greatly appreciated by me as the Chair for whatever that's worth. So thank you all for your, your time and efforts.
Thank you for chairing it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion so made.
We're adjourned, everybody.